Good evening, everyone. We'll be starting the meeting in a few minutes. If you wish to speak on any item, please fill out one of the pink cards, which is at the podium next to the microphone, and hand it into staff, as she is demonstrating. Thank you. If you wish to speak on a non-agendized item, that would be under oral communication. Otherwise, indicate the item you're here to speak on on the card and turn it in. Also, we are awaiting the arrival of our chair, who's running a little late. So let me just take a little impromptu poll. How many are here for item number two, which is the Pacific Lane? It's just about everybody. And how many for item three, which is Tierra Mia, the coffee company? And item four, which is the downtown plan amendment? Looks like everybody's here for item number two. All right. In the interim, while we're waiting for the chair, we're going to go ahead and get started with tonight's meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission, regular meeting, June 26th. Thank you. Starting at 7:05. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Don Holtz. That will be followed by a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Please rise. Thank you.
Please rise. Face the flag. Put your hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I am a patriot of America and consider the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, may we have roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hing. Vice Chair Redholtz.
Here.
Commissioner Holtz.
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos.
And Chair Jimenez.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Castellanos will not be here. He has an excused absence. And as I say, we're waiting for Chairman Jimenez. In the meantime, we will go on to the approval of minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is the oral communications. I have no cards for oral communications, but this would be the time to address the commission on any items that are not on the agenda. This appears to be Pacific Lane also. Does anyone wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Nope. Okay. So we will move on from that item. And a lot of the fact that we're waiting for the chair, I know all of you or most of you are here for item number two, so I want to have -- we're one commissioner short because Dario's not going to be here, so we want to wait for the chair to get here, so there's four of us to hear and review and make the decision on item number two. So what we're going to do is go ahead to -- we're going to skip down to item number five, which is the Planning Director's Modification, number 18-06, requesting two storage sheds at Options for Learning at 203 South Azusa Avenue. We'll go ahead and do that, if that's okay with my fellow commissioners? Everybody okay? Okay. So Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting the staff report on item number five?
Our associate planner Christine Del Strinos will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chairman and members of the commission. Tonight, I will be presenting Planning Director's Modification, number 1808, for the construction of two storage sheds on the existing Options for Learning site. The subject property is located south of the Interstate 10 freeway on East Garvey Avenue South to the west of Branca Street. The building is in a medium commercial zone, and the existing 54,093-square-foot building is on a -- actually, that's wrong, sorry. It's actually on the northwest corner of East Garvey Avenue and South Azusa Avenue. Currently, the property is occupied by a 13,479-square-foot two-story building known as Options for Learning. On June 28, 2017, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution for conditional use permit number 16-02 and approved Planning Director's Modification, number 16-17, for a daycare center and modifications to refurbish the existing site. Under the conditions of approval, any modifications to the approved site plan, floor plan, or elevation shall be reviewed by the Planning, Building, Fire, and Police Departments and the Community Development Commission, and that the written authorizations of the Planning Director shall be obtained prior to the implementation. So this was approved back in 2017, and now they are coming back to propose and modify two 200-square-foot storage units with a maximum height of 12 feet 9 inches along the south property line of an existing daycare facility use. The storage sheds will be a minimum of two feet apart. Access to the storage sheds will be along the north elevation for the first storage shed and on the south elevation of the second storage shed. The storage sheds will be west of the existing trash enclosure. Additionally, the storage units are proposed to be 10 feet from the south property line neighboring the residential properties. Upon receiving the application on February 28, 2018, staff recommended that the landscaping along the eastern and northern perimeter of the proposed storage shed include plant materials to create a hedge to provide screening from the street. The applicant has indicated that landscape planters are located along the perimeter near the wrought iron fencing and throughout the parking lot, including along the southerly property line. Under the Planning Director's direction, the application has been forwarded to the Planning Commission for review and approval. The storage sheds serve the purpose of storing the outside play area equipment. The storage sheds will be comprised of plywood and will be painted light brown to match the existing building. There will be a wood gate that will match the sheds to create a barrier from the play area to the area between the storage units. So here's the site plan of the existing property. You will see that right here is where the storage sheds will be located, right next to the trash enclosure as well as the play area where the children typically play, and they have some play structures. This is the elevations of the proposed storage sheds. And here is basically a close-up floor plan of the storage sheds. So staff recommended that there be landscaping directly along the wrought iron fencing or along the sheds so that it could be -- or it could create some type of screening or barrier between the play area and the storage sheds. But the applicant stated that there are existing plants or landscaping on the planters, which staff saw that that was quite minimal. So if you look at the conditions of approval that are before you, that is, in the staff report, we actually included a condition which states that landscaping along the perimeter of the two sheds shall be incorporated along the northeast and west elevations to provide the screening and a buffer. So in conclusion, the applicant is requesting a Planning Director's Modification to allow for two 200-square-foot storage sheds to be located at the south portion of an existing daycare facility. The storage sheds are 10 feet from the nearest residential property on the south property line. The sheds are to provide storage for the daycare facility's outdoor equipment, and the storage sheds are proposed to be consistent in color palette as the existing daycare facility. Staff recommended that the applicant incorporate landscaping directly along the perimeter, which is north and east elevations, of the storage sheds to create a buffer from the units to the play area as well as the parking lot. The applicant is proposing to leave the existing planters and make no changes to plant materials. The intention is that the existing landscaping in the parking area will be sufficient to screen new sheds. Staff recommends that the following condition be included in the conditions of approval for application, which is the landscaping along the perimeter of the two sheds shall be incorporated along the northeast and west elevations to provide screening and a buffer. And that concludes my staff report. I believe that the applicant is present, so if you have any questions, I'm here as well as they are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, for that presentation. Any questions from the commission? None? Okay. Maybe we can invite the applicant up to speak about this? Thank you. An address for the record, please?
And I live at 5311 South Holt Avenue in Los Angeles. I'm the executive director of Options for Learning. And we are fine with the conditions of planters on the north and the east side. We would ask you to not include a planter on the west side, and I'll -- there are reasons. To the west, this side, immediately is the children's play yard. And if we put a planter in there, we are either going to have to reduce the play area or -- and the plants in that area can become potentially a problem for the children because they can end up playing if they're high enough, they can end up getting stuck in the eye with things. It's not a good idea to put that planting in the children's play area. Further, that side is a long ways away from the homes that are on the far side of the street to the west. There is a wall, there is substantial planting along that wall, and there are play structures. So those houses, a couple houses that would have potentially a view, have a great deal of screening before they would see the sheds already. And also, we don't want to put something in there that would allow somebody to hide in the area. When this building was vacant for several years, before we bought it and started using it, we actually had a problem with homeless people and beer parties, particularly on the west side. It was a problem for the neighbors across the street. When we took over and we started maintaining the property and then started using it, that problem has totally disappeared. There is no more problem like that. And we don't want to create anything that would in any way invite anybody, you know, to hang out, to hide there or anything. So again, we're fine with planting on the north side and the east side, which are the sides that could be seen from a car or pedestrian on Garvey or Azusa. But I don't think the -- on the west side, planting there doesn't accomplish anything, and it would actually be disadvantageous for the children in the play yard. So that's the one request that we are making.
And do you want to speak as well, sir?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions as well. My name is Mun Liu, and I'm the architect for Options for Learning.
Okay. I'm going to ask the commission to see if they have any questions specific to your request, Commissioner Holt.
Where are the doors for the shed? Are they facing west?
No. They're on the north and the south sides.
Okay.
And there is, I should say, on the south side, there is a very heavy and very high planting because there are in fact two fences. There's the fence along the property line, then there's a planting area, and then there is a second high wrought iron fence. So there is very heavy and high planting all along that south side.
Who suggested the planting on the west side? Our staff?
Well, in the staff report I got, in the initial recommendation, the planting was recommended just for the north and the east side, and there was no recommendation on the south side. And then in the final recommendation, I mean, the west side, and the final recommendation adds the west side, and I'm not sure how that got added.
Okay. That must have been the staff added that? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Take a seat. We're going to invite members from the public if they want to speak on this topic. I don't have any cards. Is anyone here interested to talk about this particular case? Going once, going twice? Okay. No public testimony? Let the record reflect. Council discussion, or I'm sorry, a commission discussion?
Well, I'd like to have staff comment as to his objection to that west landscaping, and staffs sell it to me why we need it there?
If I could jump on that as well, because I believe that's maybe my question as well. What are we trying to achieve by providing landscaping along the west side?
I think our intent by putting landscaping along the west, north, and east elevation was to create some type of visual barrier and screening from basically the public, from the parking lot, from the children, because then you will just be having this abrupt shed on this property. And also, I believe that in our code, the storage sheds shall be located at the rear of the property, and they shouldn't be located in the front of the area, which this shed is pretty much in the front of the property. And so I think that was our intent by recommending that there be landscaping along those elevations where it can be viewed by the public as well as the children. So that was, that was pretty much it.
And to take a little step back, our code really doesn't recommend storage sheds in commercial settings. That doesn't really, that's not a very -- those things don't meld, because a shed is by nature, people call them temporary, but they're not temporary. Once you approve a shed, usually it's there till it dilapidates, and then they get another shed. And so we generally recommend, and we did in this case, recommend that they look for ways to use the inside of their building. And then we talked to them about doing some landscaping. They decided they didn't want to do that, so that's how it got here before you. I don't know that we have a grave concern about not having landscaping on the west side, but I think Christine's kind of explained how we kind of got here.
I walked in a little bit late on this one. Christine, Jeff, if you just, if you could maybe point with the little pointer, the area that we're talking about, I should say, just to be clear.
Okay. So our recommendation was that the landscaping be directly near the shed, and as the applicant stated and has provided, that there is landscaping that is existing through the planters that are in the parking lot. But we were stating that there be landscaping along the north elevation and the west and then the east. And this could be done by, I don't know, like shrubs, maybe clinging vines. I think there's definitely different options.
And so the recommendation is to provide the landscaping along the perimeter of the actual storage shed, with the exception now of the west elevation?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? None? Okay. No other questions?
The conditions of approval are before you there. It does include the west elevation, but if you choose to not require that, we can just make that part of the motion. We can remove it.
Okay. Fair enough. Any thought about the landscaping along the west, Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, you said that there's going to be landscaping on the north side. That's where the door opens up. I don't see any landscaping pencil in there.
No, the applicant hasn't, hasn't proposed any. We've suggested it, but they haven't responded. They, in other words, I think they're proposing not to put landscaping there.
Yeah, okay.
And so, and there is a door there. We're not recommending you put landscaping in front of the door. You'd still have access to the door, but landscaping on either side of it.
Well, I can offer my two cents to get this going if you like. I'm actually okay with staff's recommendation for the perimeter landscaping. At the same time, I do side with the applicant, I think I lost the visual, oh, there you go, about providing landscaping along the west. So I'm okay omitting the west, but definitely want to see landscaping along the rest of the perimeter of the storage sheds. That would be my thought process. Any of my fellow commissioners have anything to say? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I would be in favor of having landscaping on the south and on the east, but that would be all the landscaping I think that I would require. So it'd be on the south and the total east and the total south, but the total west and the total north would not need landscaping.
So just to confirm, Commissioner Holtz, so north, Christine is up, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So are we saying you're okay, or you're okay with no landscaping there?
Correct.
Okay.
And no landscaping on the west.
Anyone else? No?
I guess, I mean, I think landscaping, even though the children's are playing there, there are ways to do, and there are plants to plants that have softer leaves or what have you, and it really make a nice additions to that particular shed, especially it was meant for temporary, but it's not temporary. It's more permanent. So there are ways that you can do it to make it look nice. It doesn't have to be hedges or rosebush, but it can be a certain plant that has a lot of greens, soft leaves, and those can be incorporated and might make that whole area look nicer all around at the perimeter of that particular sheds. So that's my two cents.
I'm getting, I believe, potentially up to two different, maybe even a third possibility. So I'll tell you what, just to help this project along, I'm going to make maybe one recommendation. Let's see if we can get support. So I will motion to approve with staff's recommendation with the added landscape, but as the applicant is requesting, omitting the western elevation and not having to provide landscaping along the west. I believe that's what I heard from the applicant. So I'm going to throw that out there, see if there's support for a second, and maybe we'll see where we go from there.
I would second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second? Do we need a roll call, Jeff? So read the resolutions and...
There's no resolution.
Okay.
There is no resolution here. This is a Planning Director's Modification, so it's just a list of conditions that are in the staff report, and you're omitting. You've been clear on what you're omitting.
Okay.
So it would just be a voice vote at this point?
Okay.
All in favor?
So just so I understand, so you're northeast, because Commissioner Holtz talked about south, so that's off the, we're not talking about that. So we're talking about north, east, and leaving out just north and east?
Just the north, the east, yes. Leaving the west open. I believe what I'm looking at there already has landscaping along the south?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Southern property line, there's landscaping.
Okay. And I think that's why I left the south elevation out of my recommendation.
Okay.
I assume that it's already there.
Okay.
So it'd be north and east, is what you're recommending?
Yes, I'm recommending the added landscaping to the north and to the east.
I would second that.
Okay. Do we have a first then by myself, Jimenez?
It's a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No? Thank you. I, thank you.
And just one note on there. When we talk about landscaping, we, minimum three foot is what we mean. A foot isn't landscaping. It's got to be at least three.
Fair enough. And I'm sure staff will work with the applicant regarding landscaping in and around the doors of the storage shed. So, okay. So moving on to, I think we took a few, this item out of sequence.
We took item five out of sequence.
Okay. So I guess we are jumping back then, I would think, to public hearings under item number two, Precise Plan number 15-07, which includes a tentative track map, 73652, including a variance 15-8 with a recommended mitigated NEG deck of environmental impact. The applicant is Steve Ede with Drafting and Design L Limited, and this is for the property at 1920 West Pacific Lane. Before we can, before we start, Jeff, I do have a speaker card. I would like to just confirm or verify that they're here for this particular item. It was not noted. Dehan, are you here for this item? Okay. And you're against? Okay. Thank you. Jeff, please. Or staff, I'm sorry?
Sure. Staff report will be presented by our senior planner, Ron Garcia.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, this item was continued from the February thirteenth, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting. At the request of the applicant, uh, staff scheduled a public hearing for the project to be considered by the Planning Commission. Uh, tentative track map is required, uh, to subdivide the property for the construction of seven condominium units. A variance has been requested to deviate from rear, rear yard setbacks. Uh, the project site is located in a multifamily residential, uh, zone. The subject property is located near the intersection of West Pacific Lane and West Pacific Avenue. Again, I just want to, this is the aerial of the, this site, this is the subject property, again, Pacific Lane and Pacific Avenue, founded by a strip retail center here, and multifamily residential here, and single family, uh, to the north. Oh, I apologize. This is the wrong PowerPoint. Okay, moving on. Um, at the February thirteenth, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting, residents near the project site raised concerns, and the commission continued consideration of the proposed project, and provided direction and recommended revising, uh, the, the project. Uh, there were three, uh, three revisions recommended by the Planning Commission, the first is revising the project to provide architectural compatibility with the neighborhood, including style, building materials, and articulation of the roof and walls. The second is, uh, increase onsite parking, uh, where possible, and also reduce variances wherever possible. Uh, since that meeting, the applicant held a community meeting on April eighteenth, twenty eighteen, at City Hall. Uh, at the meeting, the applicant informed the surrounding neighbors of their revised, uh, proposal, in an effort to address concerns. Uh, approximately twelve people attended that, uh, community meeting. Uh, the applicant revised the project to address the issues indicated by the Planning Commission, and as noted, that being architectural compatibility with the neighborhood. Uh, the original project included a Spanish architectural design, and this slide shows the original proposal on building A. And this is the revised architectural, uh, rendering. Uh, the project has been revised to propose a traditional architecture that also incorporates arts and crafts architectural elements. Uh, the buildings will feature smooth stucco exteriors, hardy plank wood siding, brick veneer, window shutters, decorative corbels, uh, decorative wood gable vents, uh, wood outlookers, uh, and varying window, uh, shapes. Again, just to go through the slides on each of the elevations, again, this is revised on building A. Again, this is building, the original proposal, showing the Spanish architectural design. And then this is the revised, uh, architectural design. Again, you could see the hardy plank wood, uh, wood outlookers, window shutters. Again, this is the original proposal for, uh, the south elevation on building A and the north elevation. And here is the revised. This is the north elevation of building B on the original plans. And this is the proposed. And this is the east elevation on building B, and also the west, for the original proposal. And here is the revised. The original project included a total of six, uh, guest parking spaces, where two spaces are required. Uh, the zoning code requires point two five guest parking spaces per unit. Uh, the project has been revised to include one additional guest parking space. And again, this would essentially allow each unit, uh, a designated, uh, guest parking space. And again, that area, just to recap, it's, in this area, they were able to add an additional guest parking space, uh, they were able to redesign the entry of this unit here, uh, by going out towards the garage, uh, for the placement of that, uh, additional guest parking. The original project included a total of four variance requests. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended that the project reduce the number of variance requests, uh, wherever possible. Uh, during the review of the revised plans, it was determined that the project site did not consist of two separate lots, as originally proposed. The original project proposed consolidating the lots. Uh, the lot consolidation required variances for lot size and lot width. Uh, the applicant provided staff with the appropriate documentation from its title company confirming that the subject property consisted of one lot. Uh, the engineering division, uh, also reviewed, uh, the documents, and also agreed that the property is one lot. Uh, staff also reviewed city records on the property, and consulted with the city attorney, and concluded that the subject site is one lot. Uh, under the municipal code, section twenty-six five oh four, exempts existing substandard lots that are zoned, uh, medium density, multiple family, uh, residential from lot size, uh, dimension requirements. And just to add, uh, in detail, in review of the, of, uh, assessing the, uh, the number of lots, uh, when looking at an assessor parcel map, uh, parcel numbers are in a numbering system with a circle around, so you can notice that. Here, you can notice that are located in these areas. Uh, while subdivision map act lots have numbers that are not in a circle, uh, assessor parcels are created by assess, uh, the assessor's office for tax purposes. Uh, the vast majority of the time, an assessor parcel is the same as a subdivision lot. However, they are not always the same. Uh, assessor parcel numbers can change from time to time without notification or review by the city, while subdivision map act, uh, lot requires city approval, as well as recreation of a final map through the county. And just for reference, this is the north, this is north of the project, this here, and you can see that the assessor parcel numbers, it's a little unclear on the, um, on the rendering here, but you can see that the parcel numbers coincide with the, uh, lot Uh, staff included a copy of the city council ordinance, uh, number eight seventy-one, indicating the zoning reclassification, uh, to multifamily residential, which was completed in nineteen sixty-four. Uh, the ordinance also rezoned the lot adjacent to the subject property, which is this lot here, so this is the subject property. Uh, in nineteen sixty-four, the ordinance also rezoned this property here to multifamily residential. And again, uh, given the date that it was done, uh, the site has been zoned multiple family residential for more than, uh, fifty years. Uh, because a property is one lot, uh, the variances for lot size and lot width are no longer necessary. Uh, the project is therefore requesting one variance from rear yard setback requirements adjacent to Pacific Avenue. I'd like to also add, uh, with this slide here, oops, um, just to go over the variances. Uh, originally, when the project was proposed, the variances, uh, uh, keep in mind, as indicated in the staff report, the variances that were removed, um, uh, with revisions to the plan were including the side yard setback, because the applicant was requesting, uh, a variance from the side yard setback. So they were able to increase that by reducing the size of the, uh, the, the width of the driveway, um, and that in compliance with the engineering and also the fire department. So again, in, in summary, uh, at the end of the day, the, the project is proposing one variance, which is here, uh, the required setback, again, because of the angle of the lot, is requesting a, uh, a variance to encroach five feet into the required twenty-foot, uh, rear yard setback. So findings have been made for the precise plan. Uh, in addition to that, the findings for the tentative, since that meeting of February thirteenth, the, uh, findings have been revised in accordance with the, um, findings that were approved by the Planning Commission, uh, for the tentative map, and also, uh, the variance. Uh, changes to the proposed project, uh, do not warrant recirculation, again, a mitigated negative declaration was, uh, completed for this project. Uh, again, no changes to the draft M and D are warranted, nor recirculation. The project has been revised to comply with the required development standards, with exception to the rear yard setback. Uh, the project site has been zoned multifamily residential since nineteen sixty-four. Uh, based on the changes made to the project, the applicant has made an effort, uh, to address architectural compatibility, additional parking, and variance reductions as requested by the, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, as provided to the commission, uh, staff received two letters of concern, and staff also received one call from a resident opposed to the project. Uh, staff, as originally recommended for approval, recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolutions certifying the M and D, and also approving the precise plan, the tentative track map, and the variance. Uh, the applicant is present, as well as the environmental consultant, uh, for questions. Uh, this concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions of the commission, as well as, uh, the engineering staff is available for questions as well.
Thank you for the presentation, Ron. Uh, any questions, Commissioner Holtz?
Uh, just to clarify, the only variance on the existing plan is for, uh, a five-foot deviation on the rear yard setback. That's the only variance.
That is correct, Commissioner Holtz.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then, okay. Let's, uh, open the floor to allow the applicant to come and talk to us a little bit about the project. Uh, please come down. Uh, name and address for the record, please.
Two six eight nine Red Arrow Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. And so, a- as Ron was able to articulate, we've modified the submission. Uh, we've discovered that the lot was actually one lot, um, so the only remaining variance results from the increased parking request, and that is it. If we eliminate that seventh parking spot, we can eliminate that variance, so we need no variances at this point. Um, in addition, we met with the community to try to accommodate their request with respect to the architectural elevations, and we think we've come up with a very good plan that, uh, is very compatible with the, um, with the area. Um, one of the things that, um, we also researched was the time. Uh, when I came to the last meeting, I was a bit confused, because I, I, you know, there was an allegation that the city did a midnight, um, zoning change with respect to this area. This area's been zoned that way since nineteen sixty-four. In fact, our architect did some research and discovered that, that, that was in effect before many of the houses were built there. And so, uh, we've done what I believe is everything we can possibly do, um, and that's not to mention the, I mean, tremendous amount of work we did before we originally submitted the plan. And just to reiterate, what we had done, is we reduced the scale, the scale and size of the, of the project, uh, fairly substantively, per the request of the planning, uh, department. And so, we've worked diligently with them, we think that we've worked diligently with the neighbors, um, we want to be sensitive to everybody, we want to try to, you know, comply and, and, uh, you know, not be a nuisance to anybody, we want to build something with it we think will increase value to the neighborhood, and so that's our overall objective. And so, um, we ask that you approve it at this time. We've complied with everything you've asked, um, we've worked with the neighbors to the best of our ability, and we would appreciate your consideration at this time.
Um, just, uh, at least, uh, a few questions I would like to ask. Can you maybe just summarize, uh, quickly, some of the major changes that have resulted since we last met in April? Uh, and were those a result of the community meeting? And summarize as well, maybe some of the highlights of the community meeting, I would like to hear a little bit about that.
The, the community meeting, um, it was very similar to the meeting that we had here, and that is it, the overall, there were some traffic related issues, that was another thing I'll just talk about briefly. I, I personally spent four hours over there, two hours in the morning and two hours in the night, and it may have been coincidental, it may have been the day that I was there, but I'll tell you, it's a very quiet neighborhood. Overall, I would, I would say that that neighborhood is very quiet, and I thought that, I was expecting to see gridlock traffic, I didn't see any of that. And it could have been coincidental, but that, you know, maybe it was a non-school there, whatever it may have been. The, um, the community event went well, I think some of the neighbors thought that the elevation changes worked well. Um, so, uh, we had, we actually had people come from the, um, the adjacent condominium complex who supported it, uh, who, who elected to refrain from talking, because, you know, they, they don't think they gained anything by doing it, but they thought it would be nice, and they saw the renderings, and they were actually appreciative of what was going there. It's a lot less dense than the current complex, and, um, much more aesthetically pleasing, and so that, that was a good outcome of it. Um, I think, and, and I don't know how we overcome this objective, the, the legacy neighbors there just don't want anything, and they don't want any change, and so, and I can appreciate that, and that's why we've done everything we can do to try to comply, reduce every variance, um, the side setbacks, to comply with everything that the, the code requires. Um, I was, again, I was shocked to learn that this had actually been in place for fifty-five years or so, and so, um, and I don't know that the, that the, the, um, residents of the neighborhood recognized that either. I, that was a new fact that we discovered, and so we didn't even discuss that at the time. Um, but hopefully, I mean, based on the changes with respect to the variances and the elevation changes to be compatible, we did get some compliments on it. Actually, I remember one of the ladies said, "It looks very nice." And so, we're not looking to obstruct, or usurp, or hurt, or, in, in any, in any fashion or way, we're looking to compliment, if anything, and so this is going to be a high-quality, nice product, um, and I think they'll be very pleased with it when it's done.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Holtz?
Uh, I'll ask staff to pull up the, uh, slide where it shows the overhead. Uh, no, the other one, the last one you just had. Can you tell me that the staff or the applicant, you mentioned that if, uh, you removed the seventh parking spot, that you would not have a need for any variance, which one would that be?
So there's two spaces here, that would be this space here. Essentially, it would require pushing back this unit.
Which one, Ron, I'm sorry?
This unit here.
Uh-huh.
Would require pushing this back to meet the, the rear yard setback, and would therefore eliminate this parking space here.
So we'd have to push the unit up five feet and eliminate the parking spot, just from the, the distance? So we'd be reduced to six as opposed to seven?
I, I guess I'm, I don't see, I don't see where the seventh parking spot is.
So there's five, uh, parallel spaces here, along the Easterly property line, and then six and seven.
Are the, are the squares in those three locations, is each one of those a parking space?
These here? No, those are just driveway, uh...
Oh, okay, all right, I got you. I got you. Okay, thank you.
So it would, it would basically force that unit up on the left side of that, just to go up five feet, which we can easily accomplish. And we thought that, I mean, um, aesthetically, it, it, I mean, it, it's more compatible with that variance, and then just having the one additional parking spot, we think is helpful.
Any additional questions? Okay, you may have a seat, we may invite you back for rebuttal, okay? Thank you so much. Uh, at this time, I'm going to open the floor, uh, for public testimony on this. Uh, before it's starting, I want to point out for the record that we received, I believe, one email and a, um, I guess a letter by a Mr. Frederick Sykes, uh, not supporting this project. And then we also have a, an email from Kathy Gaiki, also in opposition of the project, so just want to read that into the records. I'm going to call up people from the public, uh, in alphabetical order. Uh, Yen Benton, please come up, please state your name and address for the record, thank These are, are opposed to the project.
My name, Yen Benton, uh, I live, uh, two four seven North Lasena Avenue, down the corner of Pacific Lane. Um, we met in April, and we protested about building the condo, and I felt like, I don't know the city hear me or not, because the meeting I seen today, it, it's nothing going to change, I know that, I feel it, you know? Um, I don't know what I'm going to tell you, you're going to change it or not, but to me, it's going to be horrendous. Um, you know, the, the condo, built it, like, you, you decide you're going to build six of them, it's going to be crumble. You know me, it's going to be more, who knows, it's going to be more... It's going to be more crime, you know? I'm no neighborhood watcher hood. I, I mean, the, the apartment nearby the resident you guys are going to build, there's a lot of, lot of weirdo coming up, you know? And homeless, too. So, if you decide to build, I'm thinking either four or a home and another three or four home, or two home. I don't know. And I, I speak for everyone here in my neighborhood, you know? And we, I am very sympathy for, I don't know, is, is it because of money issue or the city won't, you know, make more money? Or, I don't know. I, I, I'm a resident, lived there for 30 years. So, it, it was good. It was good, you know? Up and down, but not too bad. But now, I'm worried because if you guys are going to, uh, build it, it's going to be tough. I don't know. I just hope that you hear me, and I really appreciate that. Either make a four or something, no more than that. Because it's going to be crumble if you have six of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Benton. Do you have five minutes?
My name is Dehan, 1914 West Pacific Lane. I live next door to the proposed plan. In the initial meeting, the original plan was not approved. The developers were advised to meet with the community to address their concerns. The main concerns of our neighborhood in regards to the development plan, um, the main and most important issue the community had was, was with the density and the number of townhomes in such a small area. Our main concern was that the current plan did not fit at all with the texture of our community. All of us felt that seven new townhomes in such a small lot would change the feel and look of our neighborhood in a negative way. We felt that seven units was too many and that the various roofing styles, exterior paintings, or other aesthetics offered by the developers would not solve this essential problem. Our secondary concern was with the parking and, uh, traffic that the project would probably bring. Uh, the parking and the traffic was not our main concern. It, it was the density of the seven units. Uh, in the meeting with the developers, our community suggested four standalone units with front yards to reflect the rest of the housing in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood related that our primary concern was with the number of units and the design which attached four units and three units. We suggested standalone units to better mesh with our neighborhood with front and backyards. The developers stated that they had already negotiated with the city to bring down the number of townhomes from eight to seven and that they were unwilling to consider reducing the number of units. Concerns in regards to traffic and parking, we suggested an entrance and exit to Pacific Avenue with no entrance and exit to Pacific Lane. This would limit traffic on the already congested Pacific Lane. We also suggested both an entrance and exit to Pacific Avenue along with the entrance and exit to Pacific Lane to ease traffic. The developers stated they would look into these options and find out, um, first why the entrance and exit to Pacific Avenue was considered unsafe. Uh, the condos behind my property, they have a similar entrance on Pacific Avenue. Uh, up to this point, we have had only one communication from the developers, an email on 515, uh, which addressed, um, two guest parking spots to the existing plan only if their variances were approved. Uh, so basically, they addressed none of our community's real concerns. They did not address our primary concerns and kept offering solutions to parking, but did not mention why they could not put an entrance on Pacific Avenue to alleviate traffic. Uh, I request that this plan be rejected for the following reasons. Seven attached townhomes does not fit well into our neighborhood. It will totally change the texture of our neighborhood for the worse forever. The developers never worked with us on this project. Uh, the developers never offered new designs with fewer units or designed with a new driveway with an entrance exit to Pacific Avenue. Uh, they did try to convince us all that we really were concerned about parking and traffic, which, you know, that, that was not the main concern. Um, the, the main concern was the large number of units and the attached designs we did not want for our community. Uh, they tried to convince us that parking and traffic, um, was our main problem again, but offered no real solutions to either except two extra parking spaces only if their variances were approved. And again, they never got back to us like promise in regards to the suggested entrance and exit to Pacific Avenue. Uh, also, a member of our community stated that they observed the traffic studies being done on a holiday, and, and when, um, asked in regards to this, the developers said they would look into it and get back to us, and they never did. Initially, I was against any new construction, uh, but I know more housing is needed in West Covina, and I would not want to hinder the growth of our wonderful city. I would be totally supportive of a more congruent plan that is in line with the wishes of the community. I think, um, we would all be willing to work with the developers who are willing to listen. This current plan has not taken into account the wishes of the community, and the developers have not incorporated, incorporated any of our inputs into their plans. They have not gone back to us on any of the issues that they said they would. Please reject this plan as it stands now, which is essentially the same plan that was rejected initially, with future considerations when the plan is more congruent with the needs of our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you. Other places in the country and the world, they don't do that. Um, I'm still against it, although I appreciate the ability of, of the developers to change somewhat some of their original plans. If, if we have seven families going into the multi-condominium complex, I figured about, that's about 28 cars, four cars per family. That's based on my walking the neighborhoods and seeing anywhere one car per household to eight cars per household, so I took the average of four. So, seven families, 28 cars, not including just, uh, guest parking. If you have three family, uh, single-family dwellings there, you would have 12 cars. So, I think the traffic thing and smog, et cetera, uh, is one of the reasons I'm against this. The other thing is, I wasn't, I was never clear is what is affordable housing. I have no idea about condominiums. If they're taxed more than single-family dwellings or taxed less, and I would appreciate that information. Maybe there's real tax basis for wanting this to come in. The other thing is, um, I was wondering if anybody ever considered building under the ground, down in the ground. It may be more efficient in terms of our resources. Uh, another thing is the design. I saw some beautiful two-story house designs on Thelborne Avenue just north of me, and they were designed, and I'm not an architect, so I don't know how feasible it is. It looked like a single-story in front and a two-story in the back, and that's on Thelborne Avenue, and they're very pretty. I don't know who the designer and architect on it is. Um, I, again, my concern was taxes. What's the tax incentive for having condominiums? Um, other than a, maybe people would be shopping more and we'd be collecting more sales tax for the city. And then, my other concern was greenery. Have no idea about the greenery or the plants, and I appreciate it, again, Ms. Hing's comments about the sheds and the greenery there. Um, we need greenery for soil integrity, and we need greenery for oxygen and to clear our air. So, these were some of my concerns. I'm still against, uh, uh, seven units. I would think four units or three single-family homes. And that does not have anything to do with profit-making or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillman.
Excuse me. This is for Mr. Anderson and the clerk. This is for the commissioners. Maybe each half of you handle my handout for a reason. I'd like you to read along with me. My name is Phil Moreno. I'm a West Covina resident since 1979. I live in that community. Although that moratorium was written in 1964, can you bring up the first slide that shows single-family residential at the top of it? There is a slide that you had on this project that showed at the very top-left corner, single-family residential. No, not the ordinance. There you go. That's the neighborhood that I bought into. My house and many homes in that community, my home is built in 1947, which predates that This is a copy of an article from the Orange County Register. I made a phone call to the offices of John McClendon. Mr. Anderson, you should be very familiar with him. Your planning commission approved the medical building at this civic center. Mr. McClendon, this attorney, took, your planning department with a mitigated negative declaration and the judge ruled no. You needed environmental impact study. You didn't have a current general plan. You didn't have current planning and zoning laws. You bend over for a builder who ends up suing this city, and no corrective action was ever done regarding the planning commission. The staff report to the planning commission that approved that building never indicated all those deficiencies. The commission approved a project. This city went forward and ended up paying attorney fees to fight that case in Santa Monica Court, and then paid $900,000 to CGM. John McClendon, in this article, won that case for the citizens of West Covina. Then, this body wants to approve a 135-unit project on San Bernardino Road. The owner of Ready Pack hires John McClendon. Now, let's read this article. On page one, "A judge has decided the Orange County Board of Supervisors used illegal spot zoning practices for a proposed senior living community in North Tustin. Judge Gail Adler ruled that the zone change from single-family residential to senior residential housing is illegal spot zoning." Let's go to page two. The ruling states, "The concern is not the passing of the new zone by itself. The problem is the application to one property. The amendment of the NPS or the North Tustin Pacific Plan creating a zoo new zoning category for senior residential housing may have been proper, but its application to one property was illegal spot zoning. Spot zoning is when one area's use differs from its surroundings. In this case, the surrounding area is designated a single-family residential. It can be deemed illegal when it's not compatible with the existing zoning designations or with a community zoning plan." Page three at the top. John McClendon, an attorney representing the coalition, told the court that a majority of the residents living within 300 feet of the project oppose it and that the use would be clearly commercial, not residential. Fact number one, none of these people ever got a zoning change ordinance, and he will agree to that. No one ever did. Where's the right? This is called about an ethical issue. Ethics means you have to have fairness. Well, fairness to who? One developer or all of these people? This is a fact-finding commission. I presented two facts. I have a court case that says this is spot zoning, the residents oppose it, and there was never any notice given to the residents. Mr. McClendon is waiting. I'll guarantee you, he'll win the third case.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Uh, we have three cards of, with last name Rodriguez. We will start with Cheryl Rodriguez. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Rodriguez. I live at 209 La Senna. I live right across the street. The planning department put out a new agenda, which is very confusing. It now states that the proposed development has been one lot since 1964. Can the planning department verify that there were no changes between 1964 to now? This project has been in the works for years, and why all of a sudden did this show up? In looking at ordinance number 871 from 1964, it states, uh, "Change to R3 medium density, multiple-family zone," but it also shows two lots. When was it changed to one lot? And when was it changed to MF20? So, now that it is one lot, the lot and width size do not apply. What about the general plan that was adopted to preserve the character and quality of existing neighborhoods? Does it apply? Under the general plan policy 3.3, new growth will complete, enhance, and reinforce the form and character of the unique, unique West Covina neighborhoods, districts, and corridors. A3.1 incorporates standards in the development code to preserve the existing form and character of stable residential areas and prevent encroachment of incompatible land uses and intensity. The developer in the meeting on February the 13th said he was willing to redesign the project and worth, work with the community. We had one community meeting, which he was not receptive to anything we said. We asked for another community meeting, which the developer declined, stating he lived too far away. All that was revised was one extra parking space only if variance is approved and changed the exterior. There was no response at all to what we asked for. They could at least gave us a reason why our request can't be done. As I see it, the community meeting was put on just so the planning department could say they had a meeting. I asked that the commission to please keep our community in mind and help preserve our stable neighborhood and help us to have a development that we would be proud to live by. We ask that you please consider reducing the density of this project so it will blend in with the neighborhood. We request four to five family homes, and if that is not possible, if it could be five condos with the front condo on Pacific Lane to be set back as the other homes by it. Also, if they could add some curb appeal. I've looked at, uh, the architect's, um, website, and he has some beautiful homes with curb appeal. Why couldn't he apply a little bit to this project? We would also like to request a traffic study on Pacific Avenue versus Pacific Lane as to why the driveway on Pacific Avenue is too dangerous. The driveways to the apartments, condos, commercial building, gas station are all located on that street. There are single-family homes, businesses on both sides of Pacific Avenue, and there is also new homes being built down the street on Pacific Avenue by Puente Avenue, and their driveway is on Pacific Avenue. Again, Pacific Avenue is a four-lane road, and Pacific Lane is only a two-lane road. The proposed housing density would, without question, change the nature, quality, and character of the neighborhood. In closing, our home is our biggest asset, and when we purchased our home in 1977, it was because the neighborhood was single-family homes with yard, large yards. We have from the very start asked for something that will fit in and keep our neighborhood stable. What is going on with this development shows that the employees of the city will work with the developers but not the community. It's a sad day when citizens who live in the city and pay taxes have no input to a design that they are going to have to live with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. We have two. Richard Rodriguez. First one is at 209 La Senna, please. And that will be followed by Richard J. Rodriguez on Younton.
Hello. Uh, yes, I live at 209 La Senna. I'm directly across from this proposed site, uh, Pacific Lane, where the corner lot. On February 13th, the planning commission told the developer and our community residents to have a meeting regarding the proposed development of the condos. Our community asked for some, something that would blend in with exist, with the existing neighborhood. Four to five single-family homes. The development, developers' comment to this meeting is, "I added a parking space and changed the exterior." The meeting was meaningless. The developer said, "No more meetings. He lives too far in Nevada." The reason for these meetings and all of us being here was to work out something for the variances. Now, today, June 26, 2018, everything has changed. It is now considered one lot within, with only one variance. I ask the planning commission to consider homes or at least less condos so the neighbor to the east will have a little privacy, and the entrance and the exit to be on Pacific Avenue. Please work with our community to give us a little bit of stability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, Richard J. Rodriguez? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Richard J. Rodriguez?
Good evening. Richard J. Rodriguez. I live at seven-four-three North Yalton. As you can see, everybody's here, because no one agreed, as the first speaker had said, that everybody was on board with the plans. Pretty much everyone that could make it from the original meeting is here again, opposing it. From the get-go, we left this meeting on good terms. Everyone met outside, asked for a compromise with the developer and the neighborhood. Said we'll meet, never did. I was never informed, so this meeting actually snuck up on me. I didn't have time to prepare anything, so I'm winging a lot of this. Same thing's happening. The codes there. We're back at the same state, asking for variance. The developer has a problem, and his problem, it's pushed onto the community. He had all this time to revise his plans, to make it fit. One thing is, I was reading through everything before I came here, and the bulk and physical characteristics of the proposed development, they're not compatible with the existing neighborhood. Clearly states, because we're sitting here, asking for another variance. And when they went through everything, saying that there's no more variance, all that happened was exactly what everyone here has been stating. They added a parking lot, and they changed the aesthetics, which was Spanish, it's still Spanish, style. It's just a little tweak on it, but nothing else really changed. If it did, if he worked with the community, we wouldn't be here asking for variance. We're not here to say, "Don't build, don't develop." We're here saying, "Just preserve the community." One less unit would probably work in the whole thing. A question I brought up the first time was regarding the street on the setback. You know, was all this planned, was still setting back the lot? Because that street right there narrows. It's a two-lane street, but right where this property's at, it gets even more narrow. And they said yes. So was the proposed plans even with setting that back to the existing sidewalk? Because that take away about an additional twenty foot from this whole lot, and that make for even larger variance. I'm sitting back there. I'm writing down things, trying to think. This reminds me of, if anyone's seen that movie, Up. You're building these two huge units, and all that's going to be left in the center is these residential houses. There's a great program right now on PBS that's going through cities, showing cities the demographics and how they're driving out families. This is exactly what they're speaking about on that. You know, it's an ongoing program. And when people call in and say, "Hey, this is what's going on," they go to the city and they look at it, and they say, "Yeah, that's what's happening." The demographic for this isn't going to be a family that stays in there. It's going to be someone who's going to be in there for a couple of years. And when they want to start a family, they're going to look for a single-family dwelling. They're going to look for something with a yard. We're going to be left with a lot, you know, a lot of rentals in the future. Same thing. I hope you listen to all the concerns of the community right here. I know there's already a signature on that. Mr. Garcia signed it, and it's like, with him signing it, it's almost already an uphill battle for all the residents. So once again, I hope you listen to our concerns and see that nothing was really done on this, except adding a parking lot and changing some paint. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the commission, city staff, and members of the audience. I'm Frederick Sykes, forty-year resident of the city and former mayor of West Covina. I've walked this city quite a bit, so I have met some folks and got some acquaintances. And when they call and ask for a little assistance, I try to deliver. Earlier today, or last night, in fact, I sent an email, because I had another event to attend, and I didn't think I would be able to make it here. But I'm here, and so I'm going to read into the meeting what my thoughts were about this situation. So the bottom line is, I indicate that I do not support this dense condominium development project. The integrity of this community is protected by the single-family residential status that it has enjoyed for decades. The deviating and the granting of variances in the code will have a negative impact on this mostly single-family home community. Within the past decade, every city department has been downsized, and the amount of services provided by the city of West Covina has contracted to a level that is far below where it should be for the more than one-hundred-and-ten-thousand residents that already live here. And, as a matter of fact, the city's services are being further reduced as we speak. Adding density is woefully inappropriate for the city's current deficiencies, especially in this community. Increasing the density in this community will add to the already difficult traffic congestion with a police department that has few to no police officers dedicated to traffic enforcement and any sort of diverse preemptive patrol. This dense residential development is in close proximity to the ten interstate, the San Bernardino Freeway, which is heavily traveled twenty-four hours a day, with a peak hours of traffic at a very slow pace of stop, go. And this goes on for five hours in the morning, and afternoon, and into the evening hours. The streets leading into and out of this neighborhood are feeder roadways. They are feeder roadways for the freeway, the freeway on-ramps and off-ramps that are the major reason for the ongoing traffic backup and congestion. This added density and the traffic congestion, combined with the nearness to the ten freeway, will also add more to the problem and lead to the increase in the source for noise and particulates that lower the quality of the air that is breathed and the ambience that is both experienced and observed in this community. I ask you, please do not approve this dense condominium development, because a project of single-family homes is a better fit, and it is what the residents bought into when they decided to invest their money and raise their children in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Last card I have here is for Robert Torres. Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Torres.
Three-three-four North Conlon. First, I wanted to start off by saying that the first meeting, there was multiple issues that came up. It wasn't just the variances. I understand from lengthy discussions with Jeff that those are no longer on the table. The variances have been removed as a result of technicality, for lack of a better term. But there were more than that. There was more concerns than just the variances, and primarily was the design and the density. And what was made clear by Jeff when we discussed was that there's nothing legally binding you from still modifying the project. There's nothing tying your hands. So as a result of there being a track map and a precise plan review, you, as a commission, still have the ability to change the project, reduce density, move layouts. And we expect you to do that, because, like many people have stated before me, the developer did have meetings, and he did meet with us, but he didn't listen to our concerns. And that's what we expect you to do as our commission for our city, to listen to our concerns. And one of our primary concerns was requesting to reduce the density and maybe change the layout, so there'd be less homes. Four-to-five, single-family, even if a variance is required, like Jeff mentioned, or even four-to-five condos with larger setbacks to be in line with the community. And I just wanted to make that clear, because I don't want it to be said that your hands are tied and you can't do anything, because it was made clear that's essentially the only option we have left, since the variances are no longer on the table. Also, you have to review the mitigative negative deck. I won't go into length, but I wanted to oppose the LAD requirements, the low-impact development requirements. I think they're deficient and illegal, because there's no sufficient analysis. It literally is a paragraph of hearsay, so there needs to be an analysis on that. Also, the general plan, someone mentioned that the general plan directed growth to downtown and protect residential communities. I think you need to consider that as well. Also, there was a unique thing about this project. There was a general plan amendment, which is a pretty large thing that needs to happen for these projects in two thousand and fifteen. And what happened was, staff decided to put that into the general plan amendment for the whole city. And that was not done maliciously, but it denied the public of commenting on that. And if that was in this case, it would go to the city council. So we're actually being denied the privilege of addressing the city council on this project. I know it was done legally, but a lot of people didn't know it was lumped into the general plan, and they didn't have the opportunity to comment. So that's another huge issue that I think is just the lack of transparency, and I didn't think that was beneficial for the community to... Because without that general plan amendment, this project couldn't have moved forward. And lastly, the resulting removal of the variances. It stated that the applicant provided documentation. That wasn't provided to us for review. That wasn't provided in the staff report. I don't know if it was a deed or a title report. Anything for the public to review, to verify. And I know they had the city attorney verify and all the other directors, but it seems like we're denied that review and that privilege to look at that and to confirm. And a lot of it has to do with the subdivision of those two lots. Originally, it was one lot, back in nineteen, whenever, nineteen forty-something. And then whoever owned it at that time divided it into two. So if there was any sale of that property that took place, where those parcels were sold separately, or at any time there wasn't the same owner, that might have resulted in them having to conform to the existing standards, which could bring those variances back on the table. And I don't think that work was done, at least not made available to us to confirm. And that's a huge concern. And lastly, in my last thirty seconds, community engagement. He did reach out to us. We did have community meetings, but like most speakers said, our concerns weren't heard at all. We expressly asked for certain things. We requested visuals from the street to see how the condos would look from homes and how they would impact the aesthetics. We asked for an analysis on an alternative driveway. We also asked for a financial analysis, for him to possibly look at single-family homes or less units, larger units. And neighbors, he stated neighbors don't want change. We never said that. We always were okay with a multi-family. We just wanted it to be in a better form for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. That represents all the speaker cards I have on this topic. Anyone else wishing to speak? Going ones? Please come up to the front, state your name and address for the record. You can fill out a card at the conclusion of your comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Gray at two-thirty-one North Shelburne Avenue. And I'm just speaking spur of the moment. Just in hearing everyone speak, I'm really concerned about the driveway of the new condos would bring. I walk my dog pretty much consistently at nighttime, and I leave early in the morning, and I see how it's really dark at night, and how, as an early childhood educator, I'm always looking for safety for children. I do see that people are walking and families to the liquor, and it's a very dark area, so that would be very impacted. And I would feel very concerned for the families and children that are walking through that area, because it's very, it's very dark. And so more cars exiting and entering from that side of the street would pose, I feel, a danger to our children. And also in the morning, I see children going to school, walking to and from. So I just felt that that was really a concern for me, just the children's safety of seeing so many, especially since there's not a really stop sign in that long intersection, and there's cars coming from the freeway and from different open areas. So I just wanted to voice that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? That will represent all the public comments on this item. I will invite the applicant back. If you could rebut, possibly even address some of the topics that you've heard here.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just for clarification for the audience, because this is a public hearing, we have to respect due process, so we have to afford the applicant an opportunity to address your comments. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. It sounds to me that one of the biggest concern is density. And so, one of the things we discussed last time with this lot, we were allowed approximately eleven-point-two units, based on the size of the lot. And if you look at the subdivision just to the east, you'll see, my guess is there are probably seventy-plus units in there. It probably represents the density of about eleven-point-two. So when we originally planned this, it was nine units, and we've since reduced it to seven units. And so, we absolutely have tried to address the density. You know, one of the things that I ask, you know, it's hard to know who approves of this. And so, there are, my guess, at least seventy families that live on the south side of this street, and we haven't heard from any of those people. They're not here in opposition. My guess is when people don't oppose something, they generally probably don't show up to these types of things. But there are seventy families that contribute to the community, whose kids may go to school in this community, who go to the church or shop in this community. And so, just from a visual, I mean, an aerial perspective, if you look south of Pacific there, it's not a, it's not a single-family area. It never was intended since nineteen sixty-four to be a single-family area. And so, it's not, we're not trying to put something into an area that's not conforming to what those zoning rules are. And so, we're trying to conform to what's there. The other thing, I've heard some discussion with respect to the exit on Pacific. You know, we were not opposed at all to doing that. It was a safety issue arrived at by the city. And so, possibly the staff can address that issue. We can easily rearrange the project if that's what, you know, is deemed required. We can do that without any issue. If we feel that that's in the best interest, as this lady just mentioned. Safety concerns, I mean, I think there's a lot more density of people and cars on that street. And so, it could be a higher risk to the community. I mean, I'm assuming that the staff did a diligent job in investigating whether or not that would be an alternative. I think other than that, I said everything earlier, and I appreciate everybody's concerns. You know, I think it's neat that the community comes out. I think that the silent people haven't said anything. And you can see with our eyes that there's at least seventy units right next to it. And I don't think that I've heard from one of those people in opposition. And they're good families, and they contribute to the community, as all these people do. And I think we should give them that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowley. Okay. That represents all the public testimony, so I will close that portion and open it up for commission discussion.
Well, I have questions for staff, if I could do that. How many could he legally build there if he wanted to?
Based on the density, I believe it's eleven units, about eleven units per acre. Based on the size of the lot.
No, it's twenty units per acre.
I mean, I'm sorry, twenty units per acre.
They'd be allowed eleven on this lot.
So he'd be allowed eleven, and that would be, there's no variance or anything else. He is legally entitled to build eleven units, and he's building seven, correct? And perhaps staff or the city attorney could address the issue that Mr. Moreno brought up regarding spot zoning. He cited a case, so if you could comment on that, please.
Perhaps maybe I can make a few comments on general statements that were made here. I'll start with the spot zoning. Generally, spot zoning has to do with a zone change. So there's no zone change before you, so therefore, we can't really be talking about spot zoning, because the zoning...
you, so therefore, we can't really be talking about spot zoning, because the zoning, I don't think, even if it was spot zoning fifty years ago, I think that, I don't even think you could sue based on something you did fifty years ago. So, the zoning's been in place fifty years. The, um, we have the document in that shows when the zoning changed to an R3 designation, which we got rid of, I think, in seventy-seven. I wasn't here in seventy-seven, as most of you weren't either. Some of you weren't even born, so we don't really have a way to go back and recreate what happened there. But I know that the new zoning code was, the current zoning code was adopted in nineteen seventy-seven with the current zoning regulations. So, my understanding is that in sometime around seventy-seven, they changed from an R3 designation, and they made the equivalent statement of MF twenty. That was their equivalency at the time. Again, we're not gonna be able to go back and review anybody who worked here in nineteen seventy-seven, most of them probably aren't alive anymore. Regarding the community meeting, we always recommend people have community meetings. That's not a staff-driven thing, that's the applicant. We recommend applicants. All development projects have, um, those community meetings. We had one here for a different project about a month or so ago, so it's not unusual to have those. That's how, come there was a community meeting, it's not a requirement of the code, it's not a requirement of staff, it's a recommendation. There are general plan actions, and I appreciate that one of the speakers did look at the general plan, that's a good thing to do. There are different general plan actions, and sometimes that discussion is a very valid one to have with what the general plan says, and, you know, sometimes there can be things that you might look at as conflicting in terms of what those actions are, or the policies in there, but those are very valid things to consider, um, when we have projects like this. Driveway on Pacific Avenue, we do have Miguel Hernandez here from engineering, and he could probably make some statements on that if you'd wish to talk to him. As the planning commission may remember and be aware, every single lot in the city changed general plan designations in twenty sixteen, at the end of twenty sixteen, it wasn't just this lot, every single one. We didn't keep any of the same general plan designations we had before. And also keep in mind that we're legally required for the general plan designation to comply with the zoning. That's what we're supposed to do, they're supposed to be in compliance. So, if they're not in compliance, you need to fix it. So, we fixed those situations where that was the case, so we wouldn't have any liability in that regard. So, those are the things that I wanted to bring up, and I don't know if Ivy would like to make any more comment about the spot zoning.
So, the handout provided to us regarding spot zoning, as Jeff mentioned, it was where there was a zone change, and there's no zone change before you tonight, so that issue is not before you. Spot zoning, as the speaker, as the public commenter said, is when you change a zone to be different from the, basically, all the surrounding zones. But again, that is not before you tonight. Uh, the zone has been in place, and just to clarify, Jeff, the, uh, the general plan and the zoning code are consistent, so the zone for this property hasn't changed since nineteen sixty-four. So, nothing changed with the general plan amendment.
One other thing they brought up, on terms of the, as was mentioned by one of the speakers, it is a technicality, it is definitely a technicality, whether it's one lot or two in these older things, but it's an important technicality, because, and since about, I don't know the exact year, but about nineteen seventy-two, the subdivision map act was revised and said that cities have to approve changes to subdivisions. We haven't had any changes to subdivisions since that was put in place. If there were changes before, that would have happened, that wouldn't have had to go through the city, but they would show up in the information we have before us, in the assessor's map, and in the title report, and they don't. So, as I, as we put it in the staff report, we checked four different ways on determining, determining if, how many lots were there. Planning staff looked at it, we're the least, because we're the least knowledgeable, but the applicant's engineer looked at it, our city engineering division looked at it, and the city attorney's office looked at it. And all agreed in this case that it was one lot.
Just one more on that, and the applicant's title company also verified that information, and it shows that this property has always shown as lot two of this tract. It has two assessor's parcel numbers assigned to it. I believe there's a assessor's parcel division between the north, one forty feet, and the rest of it to the south, but it has always been lot two of this tract.
I just have one. Mr. Torres used the word "illegal" in relation to the negative deck, regarding some aspect of that. Was there any comment on that?
I could probably add, I think it possibly had to do with the LID requirements, but my understanding with LID, that's required at the plan check process, not necessarily something before us.
Yeah, okay, if you're talking about, yeah, the references to the stormwater runoff condition in the tract map, which is on page nine, and Engineering Division, DD, that's the numeral, and then number twelve, comply with all regulations of the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board for concerning stormwater and urban runoff pollution control. So, yes, there would be, there's definitely a need for an LID, and engineering would be looking at that, and they would have to meet, comply with those standards, just every single development in the city must.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Discussion amongst commission? None? Okay. Commissioner Redholtz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we met on this item back in February, we had issues with this project. We had in front of us, uh, multiple variances. We had concern from the residents, which we still have tonight. The interesting thing is, the, this commission gave direction, recommendations to the applicant to address, meeting with the residents, and dealing, trying to reduce the variances, making the project more compatible as best he could with the neighborhood. What he's brought back tonight, and what is before us tonight, to my view, he has met the burden, he's met the burden of doing what we asked him to do. The interesting thing is, and it's why I asked for a number, he could, within the code, without a variance, legally build eleven units there. I know you want three, four, five, six. He could legally come before us and build eleven units. He's building seven. He's building seven units. I think that he has, you know, I, it's been zoned multifamily since nineteen sixty-four. I mean, this is not, we're not doing anything new here, we're not doing anything that, there's already multifamily units on the street. I understand all of the situations, and when a developer listens to what is requested and suggested, at least from the decision-making body, which is what we are, it's very difficult for me when he comes back to us and has met and responded positively to what we asked him to do. It's very tough to now say to him, gee, thanks for doing all that, but we're still saying no. I have a problem doing that. I think our credibility, as far as that goes, is also, has to be considered. He listened to us, and he brought back a project that we asked him to do, he's brought it back to us. So, from my seat, I find it very difficult to say, gee, thanks for doing that, but we're not gonna approve it. So, you know, from my seat, I'm looking to go forward here. Thank you.
Commissioner Redholtz? Any other commissioners? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Redholtz. I don't want to be redundant on the things that he said, but I have to agree with it. Some of the comments that were made by some of the applicants, or I'm sorry, some of the residents are saying that, I think the gentleman, very first gentleman, said they don't have a problem with parking or traffic, and mentioned that more housing is needed. And the plan has changed. I mean, like I say, he could have had eleven units on there. He's gone down now to seven. He's willing for the one variance that's being asked for to eliminate that, he's open to that. If he would just move the house, it would eliminate one parking spot, but he's willing to do that. So, he's willing to do almost everything that we've asked for and you've asked for. Somebody said something about the homeless people there. Would seem to me, if there's more housing on that lot, there'll be less homeless. I mean, if that's a big giant lot, that's an open season for them to go there and bed down. Somebody else said something about if there's seven families living there, there's four cars in each family, maybe, but I doubt it, but even if there is. And each house has a two-car garage, plus they can park two cars on the apron if they have to. So, I don't see that as a problem. So, I think the plan is nice, I like the architecture. I used to live in that neighborhood, and I just don't see that it's a problem. Uh, if I had a problem, it would be with the existing condos that are there today. Uh, but this is a nice, a nice project, and I will tell you, if they had an entrance and exit on Pacific Avenue, I'd be against that, because that's like a racetrack out there, and that's dangerous. I think it's better on Pacific Lane than it is on Pacific Avenue. And saying that, I'm in favor of the project the way it is. I think it's gonna be a value-added to the city, and I don't think you residents are gonna have a problem with it. It's kind of a standalone project. So, I think it's gonna add value to your property, not detract from your property. So, I'm in favor of the project as it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. Anyone else? Commissioner Hing?
Thank you. Um, what I'd like to talk about tonight is, basically, it's very difficult, because that particular triangular lot, predominantly, it's zoned pretty dense. There's really only three lots, and on one side, they're commercial, and then the rest is pretty densely zoned already. Only left with three lots, that is, for some reason, for the last fifty, sixty years, they decided just to only had one residential home. I mean, like it was stated, it is heavily dense zoning in this particular lot. They can build up to eleven, or you can choose to build one, but that is the zoning over there. But then, on the other hand, I can understand that, you know, building seven, it also, regarding the parking and all that, having a driveway on Pacific Lane, um, would kind of entice the guests to park around that area, because the, the traffic is not as heavy. I'm not sure, or I'm not quite understanding why the driveway was not allowed on Pacific Avenue, due to the fact that there are a lot of businesses on that side, and their driveway is coming off from Pacific Avenue. So, I'm not sure why the city is restricting the driveway from that side of town. So, if you were to have a driveway on that side, perhaps less, preventing less residents to be parking on the Pacific Lane area, because it's just a lower-density area, it's easier for residents to park. So, that's my, I mean, I'm not sure, because at the same time, our city is telling the developer, they can't use that driveway, so I'm not sure what we can do to hopefully work on that side. So, that's what I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may, may we ask Mr. Miguel Hernandez, who's the engineer, to address that issue with the driveway?
Fair enough. Do we need to open up the public hearing for that, Jeff, or we just call them down? Fair enough. Mr. Hernandez?
Uh, basically, Pacific Avenue is an arterial street that has, basically, about twenty-thousand, twenty-five thousand vehicles per day. Speed limit's at forty-five miles an hour posted, and speeds are usually higher than that. Right now, there is two driveways for the retail commercial lot on the southeast corner, and then one driveway for the multifamily down south of the subject property. And the, there is no existing driveway for that particular lot right now. If we would put a driveway or access to that area, it would be unsafe for the residents, because the vehicles, the drive's so fast down that street. So, question?
So, it's a safety issue from an engineering standpoint?
Is that good enough? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. You know, from my seat, one, I guess the term is, we usually use, is it's a by-right project. With the exception of a variance for setback at the moment, the project is pretty much one in compliance with the underlying zoning code. There's no zone change, no general plan amendments that we're looking at here. What we are looking at is a variance, which often looks at unique or extraordinary conditions, and, one, just looking at the site, you already have some unique features that would merit the consideration of a variance, but I think what's also unique is the property itself is immediately adjacent to a very high-density development. And then to the west, it would be, if I'm correct, some level of a commercial or a use that really needs some sort of a transitional sort of zone, but we don't have here because of just a unique lotting pattern that we have here. We've asked the applicant to comply as best we can with as much of the zoning code, obviously, yes, we could be looking at a much denser project, but seven appears to have gone down from eleven, and then at one point, it was possibly eight or nine, if I recall testimony. And, you know, where do we keep going after this, if we were to keep asking? I'm not necessarily concerned with the SEQA, the environmental determination, only because I believe, Ron, you've covered this, that it's in compliance, the LID requirements, it's my understanding as well, that's handled through the plan check process. I'm not sure that there's been any additional information that would merit circulation of the SEQA document. I would have to agree with the commission as well, or with the primary, I would say, group of my fellow commissioners, that we've asked a lot from the applicant, and I understand that there's a lot of passion related to this project from the neighbors, but the applicant has worked and is trying to work within the parameters that he best can to put a project that will be complementary to the neighborhood, not necessarily separate or independent, and function rogue to the surrounding sub-areas. The fact that it's a condo, there's going to be a sense of ownership, so you own the product, whereas with rental, it could be a little bit different at times. So, I think that's something positive, and we should not penalize you for that, so I'm willing to support the project as well. And that pretty much represents my commentary. Do we have any motions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask staff to read the resolution numbers, please.
I just want to make one point. These are not condos, these are townhomes. Am I correct?
They're, well, they're condos in the term that, condos are air rights subdivisions, which means they generally don't own the ground, they own the air rights, so that's my understanding of what's happening here. They may have a townhome look to them, which is basically, usually, it means they're one floor above another, and there's no one on top of each other. But in terms of their subdivision, it's an air rights, condominium air rights subdivision.
All right, thank you.
Resolution numbers, if it's okay?
Resolution number, there's four resolutions, so it would be, for the negative declaration, it would be eighteen dash five nine five two. For the precise plan, it would be eighteen dash five nine five three. For the tentative tract map, it would be eighteen dash five nine five four, and for the variance, it would be eighteen dash five nine five five.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the numbers that the director just read.
I have a first, Commissioner Redholtz?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holtz? Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Chairman Aminas? Yes. This decision is subject to appeal period, correct, Jeff?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
It's ten days, the appeal period is ten days. It stands unless it's appealed.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Let's maybe take a, just a brief recess here to allow the audience to clear. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, we are going to resume. If, uh, you don't mind, please, taking your seats. Uh, we're moving on to item number three under public hearings. This is a conditional use permit seventeen dash twelve, which also includes an administrative use permit number eighteen dash ten, with a planning director's modification number seventeen-two-nine, including a categorical exemption. The applicant is Juan Jimenez, uh, no relation, I believe, um, Tierra Mia Company for twenty-three oh-one, South Azusa Avenue. Staff?
Our planning intern, Eric Marquin, will be presenting this report.
Uh, good evening, members of the planning commission, and members of the audience. The applicant is proposing a Tierra Mia coffee shop to facilitate the operation of a drive-through facility on an existing commercial building. As it stands, the subject property currently has two thousand ten square feet, square-foot drive-through facility that was built in nineteen eighty-two, located in the northwest corner of Woodside Plaza. Kentucky Fried Chicken formerly operated on the property. No businesses have operated up at the site since the, since that time. The subject property is located in a planned community development zone. The surrounding land uses and zoning are indicated on the screen before you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to ally, allow a drive-through coffee shop use at an existing drive-through facility, and an administrative use permit for twenty-four outdoor seats. Additionally, the applicant is requesting the approval of a planning director's modification for exterior modifications to the facade of an existing facility. The municipal code allows a drive-through use with the approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant has indicated that the coffee shop will be open seven days a week. Hours of operation will be Sunday to Thursday from six a.m. to twelve a.m., and Friday to Saturday from six a.m. to one a.m. To access the drive-through, there are a total of three drive-through approaches within Woodside Plaza, including two on South Azusa Avenue, and one on Amar Road. The drive-through aisle can accommodate eight vehicles at a time without interfering with onsite circulation. The applicant conducted a queuing study, which indicated approximately sixteen vehicles could queue in the drive-through before interfering with traffic on Azusa Avenue. Additional vehicles can queue to the south into the parking lot of the shopping center. The applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to allow for outdoor seating adjacent to the entrance of the building. Under the municipal code, one parking space is required for every five seats when the area is not covered by a permanent structure. Five parking spaces are required to meet the one, sorry, five parking spaces are required to meet the one-to-five parking ratio requirements. A surplus of forty-two parking spaces are available throughout the retail center. Before you are the elevations of the proposed, uh, facade changes. The applicant is proposing exterior facade renovations to facilitate the conversion of an existing building to a drive-through coffee shop. Facade renovations include new paints, new floor-to-ceiling windows, decorative horizontal wood panel accents, decorative Spanish-style surface tiles accents, and gooseneck decorative lamps. Staff recommends the planning, that planning commission approve conditional use permit number seventeen dash twelve, and administrative use permit number eighteen dash ten, as well as approve planning director's modification number seventeen dash twenty-nine. The findings conclude that the proposed drive-through use is consistent with commercial land use designation in the general plan, and that the commercial use in the vicinity will result in providing additional dining opportunities for the area.
Area.
Before concluding, the applicant is kindly requesting the revision of a condition of approval, letter C, located on page five of the conditional use permit resolution. The condition of approval reads, "Commercial deliveries shall not be permitted between the hours of nine p.m. to seven a.m." The applicant is requesting that the delivery of product and supplies occur during normal business hours, and also between three a.m. and six a.m. on a daily basis. In particular, in particular, perishable and fresh daily products, including but not limited to these items, include milk, pastries, and coffee beans. In addition to the revision of the conditional use permit resolution, the staff is proposing to modify condition E of the planning director's modification located on page eleven of the staff report. The conditions should read, "If necessary, a landscape plan shall be required." This concludes staff presentation. The applicant is present at this time, and at this time would like to show a presentation to the commission.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, commission, any questions, comments for staff?
I just have one, uh-
Sure.
-couple of questions. One, on the site plan that was provided, they're showing, well, a couple things. One, just for the sense of accuracy, you're showing seven spaces here. There's, I was out there, today's actually eight spaces. So that changes the parking. There's eight there. And they're proposing stenciling employee parking only. Is that something we're asking them to do, or they're just doing that? Or is that a requirement?
The app, uh, we communicated with the applicant regarding that, 'cause that, again, uh, just to give you a little background, uh, initially, they had proposed, um, the entry, uh, which is closest to Azusa, and because of tra, uh, potential traffic impacts onto Azusa, uh, we were able to work with the applicant in reversing the drive-through. So essentially, those parking spaces, we thought, would be best used for employees, uh, um, again, to not have a negative impact on, on parking for patrons of the, of the coffee shop.
Okay. Now, when KFC operated that, was the drive-through going in the same direction that it is now, or was it going in the other way?
The original, the original KFC drive-through, uh, entrance was the one, the, which is closest to Azusa.
Okay, because now, the drive-through window's on the passenger side.
That is correct, yes. Um-
How does that work in typically?
Well, let, let me back up for one second, because we, we've had lots of discussions with the applicant on this, and, um, the primary concern here is, it was, would be, and it probably will be, it seems like we're getting into this more and more with, um, drive-throughs, is, is back up onto a public street, especially a public street where average tr, traffic is probably forty-five to fifty-five miles an hour. The worst thing that we, that I think that the city can picture is a, a car stopped on the street while another car barrels into it from behind. We wanted to avoid that at all costs. So that, that's our, that's was our goal here. So to achieve that goal, they had a number of, of ways to do that, most of which would require them to redesign and re, reconstruct the property, and, and they weren't really interested in doing that. And so, we, we, we talked about this option early on, and they looked at some others, and they came back to this. I believe they will testify that they have a store that operates in this configuration. It's not ideal, but it is more ideal than someone getting rear-ended at forty-five miles an hour on Azusa Avenue.
Yeah, no, I understand. I've seen other drive-throughs where that happens. I mean, I'm sure it's not ideal to have, you know, the passenger side, you know, getting the food, but I'm just, just looking for an explanation which you've provided, so I understand it now, and it makes sense, and, you know, if anybody else has any question, otherwise, I'm ready for these guys.
Yeah, I, I have to agree. Uh, if you look at some of the, uh, I hate to mention a business, but, uh, In-N-Out Burger and all that, these cars are lined up on the main streets, you know, for a block sometimes. It's really dangerous, if you're going down there, and all of a sudden, they're stopped, you know? So it's an inconvenience, maybe to these people, but it's better than having somebody rear-end you out in the street.
I agree. Well, you know, the only other way to address it would, would be to install some sort of de-acceleration lane leading into this, but that would be more costly, I would think. This is probably a quick workaround, uh, for that. But I do have a question, uh, staff. Um, regarding the overnight deliveries, are, is staff recommending to modify that, or just throwing it out there that, uh, the applicant is requesting modification of that?
So, uh, the applicant is kindly requesting, uh, that modification based on their operation of how they operate the, the, uh, the, their business.
Understood. I, is there any, uh, potential concerns that staff may have, violations of the noise ordinance, uh, something along those lines?
No, so, when, when the applicant did bring up the, the question of revising that condition, we did look at the municipal code, um, and it is in, based on the operation of proposed hours, it is in compliance with the, uh, the noise ordinance.
If there's a, if there's traction to move that, would we be, would we be overstepping any other provisions of the municipal code?
No, I think it's just simply a question of whether you think it's appropriate. I mean, you put conditions in there like that, um, when commercial businesses are near residences, so that you reduce the, the friction between the two. Um, in this case, if the, if, this is, so we, we put the standard condition in, and then the applicant is concerned with, with that. Now, in the staff report, it does talk about, um, on page four, the noise impact analysis. Uh, the driveway, the order menu is a hundred and sixty-eight feet from the nearest residential property, and, and the residential properties are fifty to seventy feet higher. So there is some separation there, although I, I hesitate to, to say that, you know, we're encouraging that change. I think that, that'd be something you want, you should listen to the applicant about.
Fair enough.
Because there can be friction between residences, you know, three o'clock in the morning, getting deliveries that are, while people are trying to sleep.
Okay. Uh, then maybe we can open up the public hearing if there are no additional questions. Um, invite the applicant down to talk to us a little bit about your proposal, please. Uh, name and address for the record. And I believe you're going to have a presentation for us as well? Okay. Oh, sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ulysses Romero. I'm the owner and founder of Tierra Mia Coffee. Um, address, uh, six thirty West Sixth Street in Los Angeles. Um, so, actually, I can address some of the, the comments that have already been, been made, um, before I kinda jump into these slides, and I'll, and I'll attempt to be brief, and it's starting to get late here. Um, so, as, as far as the deliveries are concerned, um, it's really important for us to have deliveries prior to opening. We, we, we actually have a bakery that we operate, and we bake every day pastries for all of our stores, and so these deliveries are done, um, daily for, for all locations. Uh, same thing with, you know, dairy doesn't come every day, pastries do. Uh, coffee comes, a couple of times a week, as we're roasting fresh. We also have a, a coffee roastery that supply our stores. And, and actually, that request is, is very, you know, not any, in any way dissimilar to what, you know, uh, other cafes do. Starbucks has daily deliveries. I'd be surprised if they, they aren't doing the same thing, um, you know, at, at their locations in West Covina. Um, so, so I think that, that's one way to, to address it. As far as the reverse drive-through, um, agreed, it's not ideal. Um, it wasn't our preferred choice, uh, but we were told that, you know, given the old configuration, the way KFC had set up, it was just too short to Azusa. Uh, it could be problematic. We get that. Um, you know, we tend to get busy at our stores. Our Pico Rivera location was our first drive-through, um, also was a former KFC, um, and it came with the reverse drive-through. And, um, you know, we, when we got that location, I thought, well, hopefully, people will use it, and if they don't, well then, at least we have a nice cafe here. Um, but that Pico Rivera store is super busy. Um, if you go by in the evenings, we, we get, you know, a, a good crowd of folks who hang out inside the store, and also, um, that do queue up. So I'm thankful that customers are willing to deal with the fact that it's reverse drive-through. Our staff sort of joke around, and they say that, that it's a European drive-through. It's on the opposite side. Um, so that's one way that people kinda ju, get by with it. But, um, but, you know, for, for us looking at this, you know, we thought, well, do we do a, a location with the reverse drive-through, or, you know, possibly not be able to do this location at all? And we felt that it was, it was better to do the location, um, and, and think that we can bring something positive to the city. Um, so let me tell you a, a little bit about Tierra Mia Coffee. Um, you know, our, our focus as a company is to offer really high-quality coffee with sort of a Latin inspiration, a little bit of Latin twist. Um, and we do a different menu. We do, um, an upscale decor. Um, at the end of the day, we want to create a positive and comfortable gathering space for the community. Uh, we opened our first cafe ten years ago, um, and in, and actually, there was a, a couple of years of planning before that. Um, my inspiration came a little bit from, uh, where I went to scol, to college. I went to Berkeley, and there's a ton of, of cafes that, on, around the campus. Spent a lot of time there. Um, and I always felt that, uh, it'd be nice to do, you know, coffee shops on day. Um, and, you know, that turned into an idea, serious idea, and when I first started, I hoped that maybe we could get a couple of cafes going. Um, but ten years later, we have, you know, thirteen cafes now, and we have three more in, in the works right now. Um, and, uh, we're up to three hundred employees as well through all of our stores. Uh, hopefully, we can open this location in West Covina as well. One of the reasons that we've been able to, to grow, I think, has been our focus on quality, and that's, that, you know, the word quality's thrown around by retail businesses and all sorts of businesses, but ultimately, we try to get the best coffee possible. We get out to the farms. We try to roast the coffee in a way that results in the best flavor, um, and, and really try to incorporate, you know, a lot of techniques and, and, um, and practices that are in the coffee industry that result in better tasting beverages, really approach it more from a culinary standpoint. Uh, we also, as I mentioned, operate our own coffee roasty, roastery, and also have a bakery, and that allows us to really have a, a, a hand in the quality that we're offering, and, and we can really pick and choose what we sell in our stores, and do it in a way that, that's, um, that's very good. Um, you know, ultimately, I, I think us coming into the city is something positive. You know, cafes in general, I think, are a good thing, especially if you can have a cafe that is popular, because it brings people together, um, serves a community gathering space, and I think that, you know, we've, we've shown in our locations, if you visit some of our locations, you can see that, um, we have been, you know, popular in, in communities, and, and we've really, I think, done something very positive for the cities that we, we are operating in today. Um, moving on to the next, the next slide. Just quickly, you know, we've gotten media recognition over the years. Have been in L.A. Weekly, L.A. Times, La Opinión. We've been on TV. Um, in general, people have had positive things to say. Um, you know, we've been recognized, and I think, um, you know, applauded by, by several media outlets for the work that we're doing. Go to slide three now. So, uh, just quickly, some of the things that we do that are different. Um, a lot of people know us for our, our chata latte. So you've had or chata, the sort of rice, um, cinnamon cold drink. We actually have coffee versions of that, that have been, and these, these drinks have been really popular with our customers. We do a really good mocha with Mexican chocolate. Um, we have a coconut drink, a Cuban drink. Um, we do blended coffees as well, cold drinks, and, you know, we offer all the, the standard sort of drinks that you can find in any American coffee house. Um, so we, we bring sort of the traditional American coffee house menu, but also, um, bring in some different drinks and, and offer something new. On the bakery side, um, some of the pastry items that we have that have become really popular are, um, our tres leches muffin, uh, which is sort of a three-milks muffin. It's a take on, on a cake that's done in a lot of Latin American countries. We also have a churro muffin, a couple of other danishes and pastries that have, that have been, um, really popular. Recently- Recently, we, we launched a couple of vegan pastries, which I think are really important for us to, to be able to offer to folks that have vegan diets, and I think are increasingly, are increasing portion of the, of the population. So one of the things that we, I guess, that I maybe want to touch on with our menu is that we also are very active in thinking about what communities want, what customers want, how needs change, because we, as a company, feel that in order to be successful, we need to continue to evolve, and, and we'd like to continue to do that. And we can move on to the slide four. Just a quick overview of where we are today. So, Southern California, right now, we have eleven stores that are open. As far south is sort of, sort of, I guess, south and west, in Long Beach, up north into Highland Park and Echo Park, and recently, we opened in La Habra, that's the, for this east. West Covina, you can see, is, is above La Habra, and, and would be kind of a natural progression for us as, as a company, as we continue to grow. We also have two locations in Northern California, one in San Francisco, and another in Oakland, and are looking to continue to grow both in Southern California, the Bay Area, and hopefully even in Central Valley. Wanted to show, slide five, our most recent store. This is in La Habra. This opened in March of this year. This kind of give you an idea of where, where we are with our decor. I mentioned about us evolving as a concept. One of the things that we're looking to do is also incorporate, you know, contemporary elements, but at the same time, maintain our identity as sort of a Latin, Latin-inspired coffeehouse. Our, our approach here, you can see there's a lot of white, and, and the colors are very bright and vibrant, and I think that's one of the things that, that, that we want to do, and this is also, you know, different from what you may see at some of the other cafes, you know, in, in West Covina and in Southern California. So, you know, our, our goal is to create a positive gathering space, and some, and also provide an environment that, that people enjoy spending time in. And then finally, in slide six, we have our Monobello location, which opened in March of two thousand seventeen. That's one of our more, more recent ones as well. And you can see, we actually built a patio there with a, a more elaborate pergola structure, but it's also been very popular. This location, if you look closely, it, it actually used to be one of these old Taco Bells, and we did a, a number on this building to try to not make it look not like a Taco Bell, you know, where usually people paint them over, and, and it's obvious that it was a Taco Bell. Hopefully, it's not so obvious that this was a Taco Bell. But we were able to do something positive there, I think, that, that, that's been appreciated by the residents. Actually, this site had about five or six concepts rolled through it before we, we came in, and, and, you know, it looks like we're there to stay. So, I'll conclude there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sure. Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I just, I find it interesting, you, you keep calling it a cafe, which I like, as opposed to a coffee shop. You know, I mean, because, like, Starbucks is always a coffee shop. I don't think they ever call it a cafe. And I like that, that it's, you're looking at it as a cafe. It's just a comment.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the idea, I think the idea is, is with a cafe, it's a gathering place, somewhere you, you can stay and linger and spend time, as opposed to a coffee shop, I feel like it's just more transactional.
Yep. And are they all company-owned, or are they, or?
These are all company-owned.
They're all company-owned? And what percentage? Now, do all of them have a drive-through, or is it just?
No, actually, we have just four drive-throughs right now. So, you know.
Okay. And what kind of percentage is going through the drive-through of your business?
It's, it's significant, and this, in the drive-throughs, they typically will be about half of drive-through and half of folks coming inside the store.
Okay, so you're kind of thinking that'll continue on?
Yeah, that's, that's been the, the case with our four drive-throughs. We have the Pico Rivera location, Long Beach, La Habra, and Linwood.
And I like to ask businesses coming, why, why West Covina? Why did you pick West Covina to come to?
I think, you know, for us as a, as a company, we are looking to continue to grow and, and provide our offering throughout Southern California, and, you know, we, we have folks that drive from different cities to our other stores. You know, people from West Covina that go to our store in Pico Rivera. And so there's demand from, from folks who, who want to see us in, in their community. And we've been able to be successful in, in what we offer, and have been well-received. And so for us as a business, you know, as any business, you know, your, your goal usually is to grow, and that's definitely our, our goal as a company. We feel that by, you know, opening different locations, the company becomes stronger. We're helping to, to not only create a positive gathering, you know, space for the community, but we're also creating jobs. We expect to be able to create about thirty jobs at this location. Our drive-throughs have between, you know, thirty and up to forty-five employees, some of them part-time, but we'll have usually three managers at a drive-through location. So, you know, that's something I think we, that we look forward to doing, is, is creating jobs and creating a stronger company. But West Covina, for us, is an attractive city. We, we, you know, we're looking to continue to grow throughout, as I mentioned, Southern California, Los Angeles County, and it would be, I think it's, it's important for us to be in this community.
And I have, have you built one from scratch, or are all of your locations, you know, a previous?
We've done actually several previous food use, use locations. One of the reasons why is that there's already a lot of infrastructure to be able to take advantage of, and, and in this case, we actually are kind of going through a full process, and, and the building is essentially has, has been, you know, sort of gutted. What remains is, is the drive-through lane, which is, you know, a particular, you know, importance here. But we've done, we've done everything. We've done from scratch, where we've, we had the demo, you know, sort of office, you know, and, and retail space, to taking over cafes, to taking over, you know, we actually done several fast food places. We've done KFC, we've done a Taco Bell, we've done McDonald's, former Wendy's, so we've done several. So it's been a mix of, of sites, and we have that experience now under our belt to be able to take over, you know, a space from zero, or, or adapt to, you know, a restaurant space.
And my last question, what are your, how are your prices?
Comparable to American coffeehouse.
Yeah.
Sort of, you know, chain store prices that are there. We, we look at the market, and we try to price according to where the market is, but at the same time, the level of quality that we offer is, is much higher, so actually, our cost structure as a company tends to be higher on our, on our ingredients, because of the beans that we buy. We, we will pay anywhere from two to five times what other coffee companies might pay for their, their green coffee. But we feel that it's important to offer good quality, and, and at the end of the day, provide value. And, and if we provide that value, then, then hopefully customers come back, and we have, you know, good volume that supports our business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I only have two questions. You might have partially answered one. For the West Covina location, what is your anticipated employee count?
Uh, maybe I can double-check with Steve here. Probably our La Habra store would be a good.
That's right. So, sure, I'm Stephen Olivas, I'm the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for Tierra Mía Coffee. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I would expect at the beginning, upwards of thirty employees, probably, probably about thirty-five for a drive-through location here. As Mr. Romero said, we've gotten a lot of requests from, from folks that are driving out from West Covina and neighboring communities, so we think, we expect that this will, will hopefully be a hit. So I think we would start out there with at least three full-time managers, as well as a district manager overseeing that location.
Thank you. My second question, if approved tonight, what's your anticipated grand opening time?
Well, I, I guess that depends on, on permits and approvals, but once we go through that process, then, you know, the build-out can be anywhere from eight to twelve weeks, depending on, on what we have to build out. So we're probably looking towards the end of the year.
Good.
Third quarter, yeah, fourth quarter.
Thank you.
And you didn't bring any pastries or coffee with you tonight?
Sorry. Yeah, we, we had some, but everyone ate them. The residents, they took off with them.
Maybe I could pick some up on the way to work tomorrow. I've actually, I believe I, I may have frequented your Pico Rivera location quite often. And I do have a question, though. Talk to us a little bit about the modification to the hours of deliveries. Are we looking at the delivery of product that's coming in, in refrigeration units, boptails, twenty-eight, forty-eight footers? What are we looking at here?
Uh, again, Steve. So, so by and large, they'll be in refrigerated vans, very limited noise. In fact, they have, at, at least one of them is an electric vehicle, and we're talking, you know, fifteen-foot vans, load them up in the back, one person delivering it. I think it's really important for us to have fresh product, obviously, for the, for the community to enjoy, and so we, we bake our, our pastries daily and deliver them each morning. So that's why it's really important to be able to, to get there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Given no other comments from the commission, I will, okay, thank you again for providing us a little bit. We're probably going to invite you, maybe we may have a question or two.
Okay.
At the conclusion of the public testimony, testimony portion of this hearing.
Okay.
I do have a speaker card, so that is Robert Torres. Thanks again for coming.
So I was excited to see this on the agenda, because it was on the same night as the, the development that I was coming for. I'm here to speak in favor of Tierra Mía. In two thousand and fourteen, I remember that the city was very forward-thinking, they were asking us as residents what businesses we wanted, right? And I distinctly remember in two thousand and fourteen, sending an email to the city council and the city manager, asking for Tierra Mía to come, and the date's come, so I'm glad that it's come. And, just like you, I've frequented Pico Rivera since two thousand, probably before two thousand and fourteen. Much gas has been spent, much mileage, so I'm glad that they're going to be closer. Some of my favorite drinks, as he mentioned, the owner mentioned, Coco Loco Latte, the Mocha Mexicano. My wife loves the Tres Leches muffins. Every time we've went to the Pico Rivera location, the quality's been much higher than most cafes, most of the chain cafes. We love the Latin-inspired coffee, all the drinks. The drive to Pico Rivera was lengthy, like I mentioned, so it's definitely a plus that they're here, or hopefully they'll be here. The employees were professional, friendly, and happy. The one thing I also liked is their architecture, and I think they showed a lot in their slide shows. They bring a unique architecture to their establishments, and I think that's going to improve West Covina dramatically, especially if we have other businesses coming with the equal. The ambiance is great. My wife and I sit down there sometimes when we're not going through the drive-through, and as I think they mentioned, they do have the reverse drive-through there as well, not a problem at all. It doesn't stop us from going, and also, it's always full. So I think it's an essential business to have, because the tax base, the revenue they'll bring in to the city will be tremendous. And, lastly, I think it's great for the community in general, for both Latin and non-Latin residents, simply because they bring something that's unique and differs from the typical cafe. So I just wanted to support them fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. I think I've been cheated, I haven't had the Tres Leches muffin, so I'm going to have to, have to try that next time I'm passing by. We'll, we'll have to carpool in the interim. Okay, I have no additional speaker cards on this item. Anyone else interested? Going once, going twice? Okay, I will close. Public testimony and open it back up to commission discussion or questions to staff?
No, I'm ready for discussion. Let me just say.
Fair enough.
Huh?
Fair enough.
Thank you very much. Let me just say, this is my neighborhood. I live right there. And I'm very happy to see you coming in. I'm, I'm happy for a couple of reasons. I went out there today, of course, that building's been vacant for several years. So you're gonna, you're gonna take that building, you're gonna redo it, you're gonna revitalize it, gonna shake it up, and I think you're gonna attract a lot of people. Sadly, I noticed the Perfect Auto Center is gone. They have apparently abandoned the property. There's a notice on there from the Harvey Company, I guess, is the landlord, I don't know, but they were closed, and they have, you know, left the building, literally, as they say. So, you know, I'm, with your, with your business, you know, hopefully going in there, and, you know, with a new, well-lit, you know, a lot of people there, and, you know, activity there, that it should help bring in another business to the now-departed auto store there. So that's good. I'm also glad to see that there are things that an old white gringo like myself could, you know, also enjoy, you know, as far as the pastries and the, and the, the coffees and the beverage opportunities. So, you know, I'm very happy to support this. I think it's, it's just all positive as going, we go forward. I like your, your business model, I like the concept. I, I understand the need for those delivery and those hours with your type of business. You know, sometimes you go by, you know, if you're coming back from, you know, a party or something, you go by where Starbucks is, and you see the trucks there at four o'clock in the morning, you know, because you have to have that product in there, because you open at, what, six? So you've got to be ready to go and prepared, and have fresh product, you know, at the start of the day, so I understand that. So needless to say, I will be supporting this tonight, and supporting your business also.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Commissioner Holtz?
I'm surprised you're still up at four o'clock in the morning.
That's a bigger, that's a bigger question we should ask.
No, I think it's, it's going to be value-added to the city, and I think it's going to be a great, a great project, so without further ado, I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Hing, anything you would like to add?
I think it's a great addition. Recently, it seems like we get a lot of pastries and coffee shops in West Covina. Since within the last few years, we have Dunkin' Donuts, we have Portals, and, which is a great additions with this one right here, so it's welcome.
I, I think I mentioned I frequent your Pico Rivera location, I actually work out that way, so. As I think of that particular site, I see some similarities with this site. It's a multi-use property, obviously, now you have the unique matching, I guess, or anomaly, I guess, however you want to look at it, of having the reverse drive-throughs, but I see in the Pico Rivera location that it, that's working, and I, I think the recommendation is obviously to draw the queue line a little bit further into the property, to avoid any bleed-out onto the South Ban Azusa. I'm sure you've noticed, it's downhill by that point, and so that's usually where I top off on my car, when I'm coming down that hill, so you don't want to see me. But, yeah, thank you, I will make sure to swing by and try the Tres Leches. Welcome to the city of West Covina, and for investing. Any thoughts about bringing over the, the old KFC bucket and making it into a cup for this property? You don't have to answer.
It's on the budget list.
Literally, huh? Okay. That is it, so if there's no other comments, questions, I guess, resolutions? Jeff?
There are two resolutions, and, well, there's a planning director's modification, which doesn't require a resolution, but requires a vote, and then two, two resolutions, one conditional use permit, which would be eighteen dash five nine five six, and one administrative use permit, which is eighteen dash five nine five seven.
And where do we include that change to the conditions?
So it'd be the resolution for eighteen dash five nine five six, which is the conditional use permit, and it's condition, I'm sorry.
And are we recommending to omit that condition, or, or just?
Not just recommending to whatever they wanted to.
I'm sorry, so I have condition C of the conditional use permit on page five, for the revision of the delivery.
And Ron, I'm not sure if you caught what Commissioner Redholtz said about the recommend, the recommended adjustment to the condition, the one that's to the satisfaction of the applicant.
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay, or do you need?
Oh, the adjustment would be to allow between the hours of three AM and six AM.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that would be the condition that I'm looking to add.
Yes, and the other is on the planning director's modification.
Yes.
Which is?
The landscaping.
Which is the landscaping requirement. It should read at the beginning, we're only including the verbiage at the beginning of that condition, just to indicate if necessary, a detailed landscape plan will be required.
I have the Tres Leches muffins for everyone.
I will go ahead and move those items.
Okay. Second, we have a first from Commissioner Redholtz, second by myself.
Vote. Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Chairman Jimenez?
Yes. Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
And that is subject to appeal, but given the testimony here, hopefully no bad omens have been sent your way. Jeff, I see you moving over. While you're doing that, we have a code amendment, 17-02. General exemptions, the applicant is the city of West Covina, and this code amendment is for, it's a citywide code amendment, and it proposed code amendment consists of changes to the downtown plan, which is part of the municipal code. I will turn it over to staff.
Yes, I'll be presenting this, and this has been something we've been working on a while, downtown plan, which is basically in the area we're setting in. It talks about citywide, but it really only covers the area that's zoned for the downtown code, which is from here over to Glendora Avenue and from the freeway south to Walnut Creek Wash. Downtown plan was adopted by the city council in December of 2016. It's a form-based code. I won't go into that much detail at this time, but the time of the adoption, there was some understanding that cleanup amendments would likely be necessary. Since this is a new document and we're getting used to it, we want to make sure it's as good a complete document as we can make it. The planning commission initiated a code amendment on November 28, 2017, held study sessions on January 23 and February 27. Notice was published in the newspaper and mailings were sent to 562 properties, owner, property and business owners in the vicinity of the downtown area. Staff has utilized the code since its adoption, so it's about a year and a half now. We used it in two different development applications, one of which you heard and approved in May, just a month or so ago. Staff made notations on issues as they were raised or discovered, and we prepared a table was prepared for discussion with alternatives and recommendations at those study sessions, and you may recall about that. So there are, I think there are 13 changes we're going to go through. I'm going to kind of go through them at a pretty good clip. If there's some question, you can interrupt me, that's fine. First of all, non-conforming expiration time of two years. We're recommending changing the expiration term from two years to one year as drive-through uses are allowed in the downtown plan. When we conceived and went through the study sessions of the downtown plan, we were expecting drive-through uses to not be allowed. It was changed at the time that council heard it in December of 2016 to allow them, so it really kind of, there's not as much need to have a longer-term non-conforming use time period. The rest of the city is six months, so we think a year is still a good, it is longer than the rest of the city. Two, outdoor dining approval process. The downtown plan currently is inconsistent requiring an administrative review in one section and a minor modification in another. We're suggesting to amend the downtown code to require the approval of administrative review, which is the simplest review process we have. There's no notification, there are no hearings. It's a staff-driven process where we review and condition. It can be revoked if there's a problem. Three, hospital building heights. The downtown plan limits the height of buildings to 40 feet, which is, and three stories, in the general urban designation area, which is sort of the outlying area of the downtown plan. The revision will allow heights for hospitals up to 58 feet and up to three stories to encourage the development of hospital facilities. That came because we were working with a developer who was trying to do a hospital building here in the downtown area, and he told us that they wouldn't be able to do it with the height limit that we had. They were going to ask for a variance. They since decided not to go forward and withdrew the application, but we felt like it was a good idea, if we're ever expecting to have a hospital there, to put that height limit in for hospitals. Four, building height within 100 feet of single-family properties. Currently, the downtown plan limits heights to 35 feet within 100 feet of single-family properties. The proposal would change the allowed height when adjacent to single-family houses to 25 feet within 50 feet and 35 feet within 100 feet. So basically, a wedding cake step-up as you move away from the residential zones. Five, zoning designations and allowed building types. The downtown plan is in, in urban-based, or I'm sorry, form-based code, you have building types listed. You don't really have that in our traditional zoning, but you have building types. And there was some inconsistency. They're listed three different times in that code, and between those times, there was some inconsistency. So the list of building types has been revised to include all building types on the list provided in the downtown plan. So we didn't reduce any. We just, if there were some that were there in one place and not in another, we added them to the other. So we're providing the greatest flexibility possible within the original document. Six, the downtown plan parking requirement application. The downtown plan includes a parking requirement of 0.65 cumulative parking standards from the municipal code. So you take the parking standards, you add them up, and then you multiply times 0.65, so it's a reduction in required parking, and that's just for non-residential uses, not for residential, just for non-residential uses. The code would be modified to allow the 0.65 parking requirement only to new development that complies with the downtown standards. The code right now is very unclear. Does it apply to the mall, for instance, who doesn't, isn't, had no compliance with the downtown standards whatsoever? It's completely suburban development, but it would allow a lot more development and a lot less parking. So for existing buildings and uses, the parking requirement would continue to be calculated by municipal code, and that would only be for new buildings like a mixed-use development or a new commercial building. Maybe a good example might be the assisted-living facility that Merrill Gardens built. It wasn't under the downtown plan, but it fits that form. Seven, minor modification permits. The planning director's modification process has been eliminated with a code amendment we just processed a few months ago and replaced with minor modifications and minor site plan review. The downtown code does include minor site plan review, but we needed to add minor modification, so that's being added. Eight, so it'll be, it would have the same standards for review as the municipal code then. Eight, standards for special exceptions. A special exception process is included to allow deviations from standards for projects that provide special amenities, design details, or aesthetic benefits to the community. Notification requirements were not included in the downtown code for those special exceptions originally. The revised code would require notification the same as a precise plan, the newspaper publication, and 300-foot mailing radius. Number nine, add standards for blade signs, which is a type of sign that protrudes, and it's the type of sign that's on the movie theater, which is in the downtown area right now, and also the building north of the movie theater has a blade sign. The current sign standards in municipal code have been developed to address suburban development. In urban development, which is what we're encouraging in the downtown plan, freestanding signs become less likely because the ground is generally covered by the building, and sign size is generally smaller as they are mostly viewed from the proximity of, from proximity at a pedestrian scale, not as a fast-moving vehicle. So given that the downtown area has two existing blade signs, it was determined that blade signs should be allowed in the downtown code. That was done with one of our study sessions. The proposed code would allow blade signs that can extend eight feet from the building face, project 1.2 times the building height to a maximum of 10 feet, and can use up to one-half of the allowable signage area on their primary frontage. Ten, parking requirement for properties on the east side of Glendora Avenue. The parking for Glendora Shops has generally been provided in the city-owned parking lot with limited parking on the properties adjacent to the alley on the east of those. The lots along that corridor are minimal and do not allow for parking structures due to size and depth. The lots range from 2,760 square feet, that's the entire size of the lot. It's very small. I mean, we have houses in town that are much larger than that. 2,760 square feet to 18,000 square feet, and 18,000 square feet isn't even all that large. Again, we have lots of single-family lots in cities that are larger than that. So as we can understand, those lots are very small. Because the lots are too small to provide required parking, and because the properties were developed utilizing the city-owned parking lot, it would be unlikely that the lots could supply the parking, the required parking in the case of new development. So basically, the new code will, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go to the next one. The next page has more. As part of the Glendora redesign, there was a parking study that was done in August of 2016. We did parking counts, come up with 997 parking spaces in and around the Glendora Avenue area, including the parking structure, the alley behind, the street parking, and the surface parking to the north. Based on those counts, the parking spaces were utilized, the counts were taken, the parking spaces utilized generally were between 25 and 36% of capacity, which means that 60 to 75% of the spaces were not being used in a normal case. So there's lots of available capacity out there in that area. The draft code amendment would allow all commercial uses, including retail and restaurant, to occupy tenant spaces in the Glendora Shops area with no increase in parking requirements. It would allow for medical uses up to 2,500 square feet to occupy tenant spaces, but medical uses over 2,500 square feet would require a conditional use permit and may require additional parking. So while there's adequate parking to meet demand currently, successful uses could increase the parking demand, so it will be important for the city to monitor parking in the area and adjust parking requirement or supply accordingly, depending on how much development or new uses that are parking-intensive go in there. Basically, in a nutshell, what we're saying is those lots along the east side of Glendora Avenue do not provide their parking now, and it would be, make it very difficult for anyone to ever redevelop those lots if we're going to require parking on those lots. So the point is, we want the redevelopment to encourage the redevelopment and the use of those properties for intensive parking uses like restaurants, and so this is the way to make that happen, to not require additional parking in those areas. Eleven, list of permitted uses. The list of permitted uses was discussed in the study sessions, and we've modified based on... I think I have the wrong thing here. We've modified that list to, as discussed at the planning commission, adding uses like cigar lounges and taverns or bars. We have two code amendments, or two portions here that we, or items here that we didn't talk about before in the study sessions, because actually they both came up in our discussions with the 1530 Cameron Avenue. One is perimeter wall and fence height. The downtown plan does have standards for site walls and does allow solid walls of three to eight feet for screening unsightly areas like trash, mechanical equipment. But the code does not include any standards for the height of perimeter walls and fences, and we think that might be a good idea to have that in there, because we might want to have some control over how high, if those are required to be there, and how high they could be. The MF zone and non-residential sections of the municipal code require a six-foot wall abutting single-family residential zones. So the downtown plan does not, but other zones do require a minimum six-foot wall abutting residential zones. So staff is recommending that the downtown plan include a standard that requires a six-to-eight-foot wall along the perimeter of a property that abuts a single-family development. This would allow some discretion for the neighboring property owners, developer, and the city on the height of walls near single-family residential neighborhoods. Just a call to your memory, you may recall that the MLC project on Cameron, they proposed an eight-foot wall there, but that was at the request of the residents that they do that, and they were glad to do that. But this would give that flexibility, but it would require a six-foot wall minimum, and then it could go up higher depending on how, what the thought was between the groups that are reviewing that proposal. Lastly, gutters and downspouts. The municipal code includes a standard that states the following for non-residential uses. Gutters and downspouts are not to project from the vertical surface of a building. So for literally decades in West Covina, commercial and industrial buildings have not been allowed to have gutters, exposed gutters on the outside, they bury them in the walls. And that's worked fine. We haven't had, to my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints with people building commercial buildings and doing that. This standard requires that rooftop drainage be designed to be internal. This standard requires a higher-quality architecture, and this standard has been in effect for decades, no difficulties. There is no such standard in the MF zone, so here's where we get the issue. So that the standard has not been applied to multifamily buildings. So this is something we didn't really think about. Now we're melding in the downtown plan, we're mixing residential buildings and commercial buildings. So it kind of creates an issue there where we might require something of one building but not of the other, and they're right next to each other. Why did we do that? So based on, staff did some research and communicated with some architects and folks from other cities who may have dealt with this same issue. And so based on that, this is what we're recommending the downtown code to state. Gutters and downspouts are not to project from the vertical surface of a building. A mixed-use residential or residential building may propose exterior gutters and downspouts if they're architecturally consistent and incorporated with the architectural style of development. Exterior gutters and downspouts should be reviewed by the town design advisor and approved by the planning commission as part of the precise plan. So basically, it makes that a design issue, and so it allows those residential developments, which may have a problem with the interior gutters, to propose something different, but it allows also the city and the planning commission, or the staff and the planning commission with the help of an architect who's our town advisor, to maybe come up with a little bit higher-quality architecture than just gutters you might buy at Home Depot. These amendments have been drafted and amended into the downtown plan. They're before you tonight as part of the ordinance, I'm sorry, the resolution. The downtown, now this is the downtown plan document. I handed this out so you remember what it looks like. It is, it is part of the zoning code. It doesn't look like it is, but it is. It's draft, it's in there as under separate cover, and it also is a different document with, that has to be created through a different kind of fancy schmancy design program. Fortunately, Veronica knew how to, figured out how to use that, so we were able to modify it. But it is something, it's not as easy as modifying the code where we just send it off to a municipal code company. We have to modify the document. Once this is approved by council, we will modify the document, and this document will look different, it'll be paged different. The proposed code amendment is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to 15061, so that's our declaration on that, and that's included in the resolution. If the planning commission chooses to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, the city council will hold a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed amendments. That concludes my staff presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jeff. You have riveted here, commission. They're just glued to their seats. Any questions from the commission?
Should've got some of that Tierra Armia coffee before.
I'm telling you, I am. Stomach is rumbling.
I mean, I've never heard the term "town design advisor" before. Can you, who is that?
Well, let me be clear where the, not necessarily the term I came up with, but if you were to open to page ninety, why have this? If you open to page 98 of the downtown plan, you will see under E, "town design advisor."
Sounds like an East Coast reference.
"To facilitate the application review process, the city shall hire an architectural and urban design advisor who shall advise staff and the planning commission for precise plan review, conditional use permit, blah, blah, blah." We hired a company called RRM who does that, and they did that, they, that is done early on. They don't necessarily come here, but if you had questions, we could bring them here. And it's only for the downtown plan, it's not for any other development, but they did perform that for the MLC project. They gave us comments upfront, and they revised some of their architecture based on that, and they also did provide comments to the hospital design, who had greatly revised their massing of the building to do that, but then they, again, they decided not to go forward.
Just so, we've never had anything from them included in a staff report to us that I...
I believe that, yes, if you go back and look at the MLC, you'll see that...
Was there?
There was a discussion on, that RRM provided input.
Oh, okay, RRM, okay. But that term I've not seen before in a...
No, well, it's, I use that term because that's what's used in the downtown plan. When we talk about it at staff, we don't use that term.
Good job.
I'm pretty good at that.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't even know if we opened this up for public hearing.
Yes, you'll need to open it up for public hearing, even though it's open here.
I think we lost our own... Yeah. I see someone high above.
Oh, he's high above, all right.
Yeah, he is. Okay. I will close the public testimony then. And commission, questions, comments, recommendations? If you need a recommendation from us, Jeff?
I'll make a motion to approve if that's what is required.
Second.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Commissioner Redholtz? Motion second by...
Jimenez.
And let me give you the resolution number, which is 18-5958. And then, ready for roll call?
That's the one. Roll call?
Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Chairman Jimenez?
Yes.
Let me just, for the record, say this decision is final.
It is a recommendation to the city council.
Right, okay. And it goes to the city council at a date to be determined. Okay? Thank you for that. Yeah, totally. All right, so continuing on with the agenda, I know we have a, or we had, I should say, a non-hearing item that was heard ahead or out of sequence, so we can probably just glaze over that at this point, right, with item number five? And then we will call this a continuation of oral communication. Let the record reflect, no one, with the exception of a council member, is in the audience. They don't count, okay. That wasn't me, by the way. I'm like a parrot. I just, you know, I squawk whatever I hear. Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Planning director's report?
We have a commission comment.
Oh. That's, that's late in the day. Obviously, the, the cerebral, cerebral cortex is not, it's not working.
Just very briefly, to, to remind the vast listening audience across the world of YouTube, that tomorrow night, we're having our summer concert here, and it's gonna be Cold Duck, who really puts on a heck of a show. And The Price is Right, it's free, and it's right here at the courtyard. So I would, I'll be there, and I urge my fellow residents to come by and dance the night away here at City Hall.
Cold Duck, thank you for that. They're very popular. I think I've seen them across the region, and they do play very well. Okay. Commissioner Holtz, I believe you had something as well?
Just a quick question to staff. Does Crestview Cadillac still have something on the books about building some sound wall or something like that?
Not Crestview Cadillac, no.
They don't? Okay.
Commissioner Hing, anything? No? Okay. You're just like me, ready to move on. Okay, no, no comments from me. I guess we can go on ahead and ask for that director's report.
We have a forthcoming, we have items on the, the tenth, and, and at least one item so far on the twenty-fourth. So it looks like we'll have two meetings in July. And we have the subcommittee minutes from last week.
I have a one question on that. Wasn't, wasn't the Sizzler thing originally on tonight's agenda?
It was originally scheduled, there was a, there was a, there was a, it needed to be held over to get some additional information from them. But it, it is ready to go, and I think we mailed out the stuff this week for...
Very good. Thank you.
Any city council actions, Jeff?
No, nothing to report on that.
Okay. That pretty much concludes all the items for the Tuesday, June 26, planning commission meeting. The time right now is 9:50, and we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.